We will call the meeting to order. Welcome to, welcome to meeting number 10-22 of the Freeport Town Council. We're here in council chambers on Tuesday, May 17th. And we will start with the roll call. Councillor Pillsbury.
Resem.
Councillor Fornier.
Here.
Councillor Lawrence.
Here.
Councillor Egan.
Here.
Chair Pilch is here. Councillor Daniele is with us on Zoom, I believe.
Here.
Councillor Daniele, are you here?
There he is.
All right.
I am here.
Can we, oh, you have to turn him up if you want to hear him. Just want to test to make sure it works.
Yep. Jake, why don't you give us some talk here?
You're still.
No problem. I am here, reporting in, ready for duty.
All right. Thank you, thank you, Councillor Daniele. And Councillor Bradley is not present at the moment. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Some administrative items up front. First, we have to waive the reading of the minutes of our last meeting, number 09-22, which was held on May 3rd. And to accept the minutes as printed.
Second.
Thank you, Councillor Lawrence, and thank you, Councillor Fornier, for the second. Any discussion on the minutes that were expertly prepared by Ms. Wolf? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Jake, are you an aye on that?
Do you want me to have to abstain?
Comes up, and.
Councillor Egan has to abstain. I wasn't at the meeting.
An abstention. So we've got five to zero with one abstention. So the minutes are approved. Our next order of business is announcements. And the only announcement that I have is that on June 14th, roughly a month from now, we have a joint workshop with the Conservation Commission to talk about Hedgehog Mountain and what we want to see done with the property. There's a proposal to put some mountain bike trails there. So we're going to have a discussion. We'll be here in council chambers, 6 o'clock, Tuesday, June 14th. So that should be a good discussion. That's all I have for announcements. But Councillor Lawrence has announcements.
I do. I want to let you know that the Freeport Players are having a show, live show, at Meeting House Arts, June 10th to the 12th, and June 17th to the 19th. On the Sundays, it's a matinee. The show is "That's Life." Come and have some laughs with us. Showtimes are two weekends, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, June 10th to the 12th, 17th to 19th. Presented by the Freeport Players, Meeting House Arts, 40 Main Street. Freeport tickets at the door or www.fcponline and at the door. As the song says, "You might be riding high in April and shot down in May, but you might as well enjoy the ride." And I'll leave it at that. You'll hear it again next time.
Awesome. Thanks for that. Any other announcements? All right. Moving right along. Our next item of business is information exchange, which is a time for councillors to share information, typically from board and committee meetings or otherwise. So does anybody have any information to exchange? Councillor Pillsbury?
The Winslow Park Committee met, and the ramp project's going well. It should be done by the end of the month. The playground project is probably going to be in the fall, given some challenges with the bids. But I think we've got a vendor selected. The bid process is complete, right, Peter? And it should be good, but they don't want to disrupt the activity during the summer. So just going to do it for the fall.
I think it was, if it could have been done by now, I think it would have probably gone forward. But it's, I think the construction, last I heard, the construction option was right in the middle of the summer tourist season for the windows. So probably not great for campers.
Super. Thank you. Councillor Egan?
In late April, I had the privilege of going to the ACAF Board Meeting. I'm the council liaison to ACAF, Arts and Culture Alliance of Freeport. I got a chance to meet the rest of the board. I knew about half of them. And they're extremely busy. They got a lot going on. If you haven't seen or think about that there's much going on there, sign up for their email. There's practically an event there twice a week, if not more than that. So there's a lot of different shows going on. It's great to have all that activity on our main street. They are in the process of a strategic plan, laying out some very elaborate and specific fundraising goals. And I believe the organization is coming out of the pandemic on good footing and is ready to really expand into a demand for live arts performance and presentations in our community. So great to see them succeeding.
Fantastic. Anyone else?
I just mean, we had a Complete Streets meeting, and we were all excited about the downtown visioning and all that, and working hard on completing the streets, as they say.
Awesome. Awesome. With that, it's a good segue. So we have a group that I'm calling for now, the Downtown Task Force, which met on May 5th, which is mostly representatives from the boards and committees, plus a handful of members from the public or who are on just ad hoc groups that have an interest in downtown. We talked through, our working document was that list of 75 or 80 items that were in the back of the principal group's report. And we're taking that as our plan. And what I've asked the group to do is for people to sign up for projects, basically line items in that list, that they think they or their group will spearhead. It doesn't mean that that person is doing the whole project, but they're the ones that can report back to the task force that says, "We've got this in progress. This is stuck. We need some grant money for that." And then the task force, which we hope will meet monthly, will be a good place to coordinate and say, "Oh, this group needs that group in order to do something." So an example might be if Complete Streets is working on getting more bikes downtown or bike parking, maybe the planning board wants to enforce a new bike rack mandate for new development, something like that. So it's a place to coordinate between groups. And then it's also a place to filter and prioritize resources. So we may say, "Hey, we need some funding for the bike racks," or "We need to apply for a grant for the bike racks." So if we get all those requests in one place on this big spreadsheet, we can then filter it and bring it back to council and say, "Hey, we need this amount of money in the following year for these projects." And then the council can help prioritize, "We'll do this one. We won't do that one." So the group doesn't have any authority to spend money or make those kinds of decisions, but they will hopefully dig into the weeds of the projects and come back to us with the details of what they need. So they're meeting again on the 26th. It'll probably be via Zoom again. So it's open to the public for anybody who wants to come and just kind of listen in on what's going on with downtown. I'm hoping that if we get some good work done on the 26th, I can come back to you guys at our June 7th meeting, or maybe the following one, with a list of basically requests and suggestions for prioritization that we can then look at. And as part of that, Brett Richardson, the new executive director for FEDC, is going to start tracking grant requests. So anytime somebody has an idea for a grant or a potential funding source, they'll copy him on it. He'll keep a long list, and we'll be able to track. "We got these. We didn't get those. And this is what we need." And if we need to go out and get some help to write the grants, you know, we'll have a single point of contact to coordinate that. So that's what's going on with downtown.
And that document played heavily in our last meeting.
Yeah, we talked.
Complete Streets.
Yeah, yeah. And Complete Streets is very, very, very well organized and has a similar document. So I think there's a lot of overlap.
It was the same doc, it was your document or the one that was sent out.
Oh, okay.
We were going through it.
Good.
It was like, "Yeah, we're here, and we're here."
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you guys are on top of things, which is nice. And then, secondly, last night, the Police Advisory Committee met. And the meeting before that, which I was not at, which I think Joyce gave us an update on, they had a social worker attend who has been involved in the Portland program and currently involved in the Westbrook program to talk about what that looks like. And we talked a lot about that last night. And the group basically endorsed the idea of hiring a full-time social worker to work embedded within the police department to go on calls that are more of a social work nature, to deal with mental health issues and things like that. They're not sort of crime-related, so. So they'll probably come to the budget hearing and talk more about that. But they're very supportive of the idea. And they're also eager and willing to help with writing the job description and the search process as well. And also recommended that we try and find, pursue some grant opportunities, because a lot of other towns, including Portland, Yarmouth, Thalmouth, Cumberland, I believe, had various different grants to help pay for getting their social work programs off the ground. So we'll start looking for that. That's all I've got for information updates.
Actually, I've one other thing. It's actually kind of a question for Peter, related to Portland's decision about the asylum seekers and funding and how they're going to stop. You know, they're basically, I don't want to, how do I say this delicately? I mean, not washing their hands of it, but they're taking steps to shore up their own budget, and more of the burden's going to be forced on towns. And we've got a number of those folks here in Freeport. I mean, what do we, what do we need to be thinking of? What do we need to be kind of working on?
Yeah. I think the interesting, if you read the recent article on it, the most interesting way it was described, there was a Portland city official, it might have been the acting manager there, that said, "We're not helping people. We're just going to start following the same standard that everybody around us has been following for 20 years or 15 years." And that's probably the best way I could describe the way that we've always handled them. We, voucher placements are nothing new to us for general assistance. Other towns and cities and agencies, not municipalities, have placed people by vouchers in our hotels over the years. And there's a standard that's outlined under the law and under the general assistance guidelines that if somebody wants to reside in that community, that person is a resident of that community for general assistance purposes. And that has, nothing has changed in that respect. So if somebody presents it at our contracted GA provider, Freeport Community Services, and says, "Hey, I want to settle in Freeport. I want to live there," we would have to process it the same way as we have for, you know, 10 or more year, five years since that standard has been in place. We're not expecting to see a huge number of new cases. I think there has been one over, one or two families, and maybe a couple in Yarmouth, that when Joanna Hanselman worked here, she did GA assistance. She was a town employee, but she, we also contracted with Yarmouth to handle their general assistance applications. So maybe five between the towns of Yarmouth and Freeport over the, you know, the couple of years preceding this that have gone through that process. So that number may go up. It's something we're going to just watch and see if people are knocking on Freeport Community Services' door, asking for help. There is the potential that there could be an impact there. There's also the potential that that could be offset by 90% assistance from the state that they were providing to Portland, which may be available to other municipalities as well. So all that being said, I don't know. We're going to need to see how, it's something that's concerning. But it's not something that's outside the law. So it's not like, or at least as far as what we've seen, it's not like something's being done that is, Portland's trying to do something illegal to all these other towns and cities. I think they're just following the same guidelines that we've followed for years and years. Is kind of the change. Now, I think it bears watching. I think it bears tracking and seeing if there is an increase, what those numbers look like. And I think we need to get those updates from Mike and from Sarah at Freeport Community Services, who've been involved in this process throughout the, you know, the whole past couple of years. I do think it's going to play, it's going to be affected heavily by availability in hotel rooms. And it's something that off-season has been an issue here for two, three years now, our voucher placements from agencies and other municipalities. You saw, you've seen probably in the press, the problems in South Portland. Very similar issues here, but on a much smaller scale. They haven't been anywhere near the scope is what you're seeing in South Portland. But it has been a driver on resources. So all that being said, I don't think it changes anything from what we've seen over the past two years. But I think it's something we want to keep in mind and maybe ask for updates on a regular basis and review those. I'm happy to pass those on to the council or talk about it in, you know, much more detail if the council wants to delve into what that means, you know, how to interpret those numbers when we see them.
Yeah, I mean, that's great. I didn't mean to imply Portland was doing anything illegal or things that they weren't supposed to be doing. They're just taking a bit of a step back because of the volume, and they're trying to, you know, have other towns support this as well. And I just didn't know, I mean, it's going to be a volume increase for us. And we're going to have to take the reins on some of this, right?
Not, I mean, I don't know. I don't know how to predict that. I don't know that people are going to all of a sudden say that they want to live in Freeport where they haven't before. That wouldn't make any sense to me. If that happens, that would be shocking. Because now, why have things changed? Like, is Freeport a destination for people now when it wasn't before? I mean, definitely, if that happens, we need to discuss it, for sure.
Councillor Fornier?
Couple of questions have been brought to me, and I don't know the answers. Is Freeport is a destination town for people to come shop and visit? We've lost a couple of hotels now. So I'm wondering, and again, this is uncharted territories, how that may have effect on where people want to come and stay. And so I'm hoping maybe through FEDC or whatever, maybe we can kind of track that to see if in fact that has had a negative effect or a positive effect. But that's something I don't think we've ever experienced in all the years we've been here to have that loss of a number of hotel and motel lodging in the town.
Yeah, from a capacity standpoint for visitors, it may be a concern. But from the business standpoint themselves, they're doing better under the current process than they would have been having those rooms stay vacant, or else they wouldn't be doing it. So, yeah, the individual property owners, you know, that's, those are individual contracts, and they've got to make the decision what's right for their business. But from a capacity, are there not enough rooms for people to come visit and stay here? Is that the question you're asking, I think? Yeah. So, I mean, that's, I'm a firm believer the market will sort that one out, that, and hotel prices will sort that out too, as to what's affordable and what's not. I think it's certainly something to watch. I saw the, you know, I've seen the news coverage, and it's really going to be questionable how it shakes out. I think the most surprising part of the entire discussion was, this whole discussion over the past couple weeks or month or so has been learning how much voluntarily the city of Portland was paying. It's described by people in the industry, you know, the social service industry is insane, that they're paying $7,000, $8,000 a month to put families into hotels voluntarily, not based on what they're required to do under general assistance. So, yeah, and it's not, it's not any individual municipality's responsibility. Frankly, it's a policy that's set by the federal government, and it's supported by the state, right? Like, this is the way that we have to process those applications or state law and state regulations. So I'm not seeing, it's kind of shocking to me that there's not a lot of leadership on the federal and state level on this issue. Regardless of where you stand on the issue, it's not even being discussed federally and at the state level. And I think that needs to change. And I think the, whatever comes out of the decisions Portland makes is a direct result of there not being leadership on this issue anywhere, you know, at the state or federal level, and things being pushed down onto individual municipalities and the state of Maine to deal with. I mean, that's crazy. Sorry. That's, that may be too much information. Insane, what?
Any other information exchange? Councillor Bradley?
Sorry to have a question. So several weeks ago, before, before a lot of things happened in my life, one of the constituents asked me, "What are we doing with respect to that issue? And are we promoting the relocation of immigrants to our town?"
Nope.
What is the situation at the corner of South Freeport Road and, you know, where, the Casco Bay Lodge? Are we doing that?
No. That's a private, that's a private contract that was written between the property owner and the city of Portland to house people.
So that's Portland's paying for that?
Currently, yes.
Do, does anyone in our town have any jurisdiction over any of the issues about relocation of people to our town? If someone wanted to drop?
I'm trying to think of how to accurately answer that question.
If the Ukrainian, if 300 Ukrainians showed up in our town because somebody did a private contract, would we have anything to say about it? I'm just trying to see whether there's any, for this person, whether there's any leverage.
And that's what I think the question, the original question that Matt asked, Councillor Pillsbury asked, which was what, you know, how that, no. I mean, you have, you have a role to play if you wanted to go out and seek people. The town has that role to play and say, "Hey, we'd like to serve as a destination." That is not a role that anybody has played, either on town staff or on the council that I'm aware of. I mean, maybe somebody's had individual conversations, but there's been no, no. Nobody at the town has played that role. I guess you could if somebody wanted to.
My question was the opposite. If someone in town were objecting to the relocation of immigrants to our town, is there any one, any way our town would have a role to play in that regard?
You.
I'm not asking this for my sake, but for the sake of this constituent.
We have land using and licensing control over the hotels, but to the extent that these are private contracts written for hotel use between the city of Portland and the private property owners, we would have no say over that. What, I think the question that Matt asked was, is there going to be an impact there? And the question depends on whether or not individuals want to come and apply to us for general assistance. And that's something that's very firmly defined in state law, how you process those applications. You can go above and beyond that. That's something that, the tail end, I think you caught of that conversation, that that's something that the city of Portland has been doing for years, going above and beyond what's required. But most majorities meet the standards and the requirements, and that's it. And that's, I think, every single municipality around the greater Portland area currently falls into that category, where it's pretty well-defined how you deal with somebody who, the state regulations explicitly define that as long as the process that somebody has to meet a certain threshold in the immigration process, like they're lawfully pursuing a course of immigration that's recognized by federal law, and they're homeless and unable to support themselves, those are the qualifying criteria. And so I would say the vast majority of people who've been taken in under that program that Portland placed people out into different municipalities have been, according to the state standards, they've met the criteria. That's a state law and a state regulation that says who is eligible for assistance. And again, 70% of that is provided by the state, and 30% is provided by the municipality. So that's a long-winded way of saying, "No, Ed, we're not playing any role in it. We're not seeking to play any role in it, but we do have to respond if somebody makes an application to our general assistance manager at Freeport Community Services." That's when we, if they meet the criteria outlined in the law, and they're looking to settle in Freeport, and they're not looking to settle in Portland, in that hypothetical situation, somebody would be the responsibility of Freeport, if they, if their long-term goal is to settle in Freeport.
Any other information exchange?
Can we talk about the Island Rover?
If you have, if you want to.
I think at the last meeting, I said we were going to meet with the executive director. We met with the executive director. He was, that was.
At the Wolf's Next Center.
At the Wolf's Next Center, I'm sorry, to talk about the possible launch of the Island Rover there. He was open to it. He saw no reason himself for the farm, assuming conditions are met and due diligence is reached, to object. But he made it clear it's not his call. And we have a meeting with the full board of the center. That is Peter, Adam, and I. And he, and we'll talk about, with anyone else who might want to join us, to present the issue, talk about where we are in due diligence and get their input. Question is only whether at this stage they have reason to believe they would deny permission for this to go across their land so that no one spends money unnecessarily doing due diligence. Thank you.
Reasonably positive update?
Yeah.
Encouraging. All right. I think we're ready to move on to the next order of business, which is our town manager's report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a reminder, Memorial Day, which is at the end of the month, the parade will be at 10 o'clock this year. And there's a ceremony following the parade immediately in Memorial Park on the corner of Bow and Park Street, right by the Hilton Garden Inn. Just a couple of updates on some road projects that are going on right now. Pownell Road is a state paving project. I've gotten several inquiries over the past week about what the heck is going on there. I do live there, so I've gotten some firsthand stand-in watches that, as the trucks go by. It is a shim and overlay job, so it is not a comprehensive road reconstruction project. The state took that project on. They did it all themselves, and we'll see what the results of it are. Another state, two other big state projects that are going on are the DOT Bridge Projects. Yeah, Exit, well, you're happy, Chip. I'm glad to see that. There's some people that aren't, so I just want to let people know. We've gotten several complaints. We know that there are issues, again, not a town project, it's a state issue, it's a state project. But there are traffic control issues at the Exit 20 Bridge Project that are known, and it has to do with being able to get, source the materials. They're going to be installing Jersey barriers. You'll notice there are lights up that haven't been connected by CMP that are going to do automated traffic control through the construction process. The reason that the flaggers are out there is just temporary, until both the lights and the Jersey barriers are installed. It's a pain. People have been stuck there for minutes, dozen minutes, 20 minutes at a time, as traffic backs up in the morning. We understand that. We're talking with the state. I know our Public Works Department's going to be meeting later this week to go over those concerns and make sure they move that along and expedite getting the traffic control measures in beyond the flagging and single-lane traffic as quickly as possible. It's not anything that we can do anything about, but we are letting them know the amount of complaints we're getting. So I guess that's code speak for, "You don't need to call the town. The town is well aware it's an issue. The town is trying to get the state to address the issue, and we'll do it as quick as we can." But the long-term plan at both of those sites is two-way traffic. There's always going to be delays during construction, but they will be signalized to the most extent at Exit 20 during the construction process. And things will be divided out, and traffic will flow through there. Be a little bit delayed, but it's not going to be like the single-lane, no Jersey barriers that you're seeing right now, because that's going to be a long-term construction project. So they're in the process of installing the traffic control. When it gets in, you'll see a marked improvement down there. And we'll pass along all the concerns that people have passed on to us, to the state, so that they're aware how much they're inconveniencing everybody. And last but not least, we've got communication from the Municipal Association here seeking volunteers for the Legislative Policy Commission. It says, "Dear legislative municipal officials, anybody but Councillor Egan is welcome to apply to be on the..." I'm joking. John just joked to me before the meeting that they wouldn't want him on the policy committee. But if anybody, any elected officials, including the council, is interested, I've done it before. It's a time investment. It's not something I think I necessarily need to do right now again. But if you have a lot of interest in state policy and the positions of municipalities, it's a fascinating, several hours a week debate with officials from around the state over what the position of the Municipal Association is going to be on bills that come forward. So, and I think John's joke to me was centered around the LD 2003, which was the housing bill, which was quite the debate at the Municipal Association. So I know they might have taken some positions different from Freeport, for example, or might have had different concerns than we have, because they represent an entire state of municipalities. So if that's something you have any interest in being a part of, they're always looking for town officials to serve on that board. It's about, I want to say it's about 170, it says here, so I was wrong. 70 officials that serve on that committee. So it's unwieldy, and it's a great legislative body of municipalities that goes over legislation every year. So if you're interested, come see me. I think we have to nominate somebody from the municipality, so the council would serve as the nominating board or the endorsing board or something like that. So if you're interested, we can put it in front of the council. The deadline is June 22nd, so it would have to be done at our next council meeting to meet that deadline. That's all I got, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Councillor Bradley?
Once again, I apologize for being late. I am the girls' tennis coach, and I was at Wayne Fleet with the team, and we lost. And so that's the bad news. Good news is, I'm back here with you. But the bad news is that this past weekend, I was at a funeral and in close contact with my entire family. And one of them called last night, tested positive for COVID. So I'm here, having been exposed to a COVID-positive person. I have no symptoms. I have not been tested. I have been allowed into doctors' offices and to drive girls around without any problem.
I have been allowed into doctors' offices and to drive girls around without any problem. But I thought, with all due respect to everyone here, that if anyone objected, I would leave.
So that's the angle? I just got over it, so I'm fine. You're not going to get me.
If I were sitting where you were, I'd want to know, I guess, and, uh,
Yeah, I appreciate the, uh,
But to clarify, you're not under a quarantine order from the government. You're under a mask and watch your symptoms directive, just like probably several of us or maybe a few of us that have been here for the past couple of weeks.
Thanks for mentioning that.
Thanks.
All right. So we are now at our public comment period. So here's how that works. We have not a lot, but we have a few items that are already on the agenda scheduled for a public hearing. So if you're here to talk about one of those, hang on. We'll get to that during the, the part where it says public hearing on that item. If you're here to talk about something else, this is your chance. Uh, so if you want to, come on up to the podium or raise your electronic hand on Zoom. Use the raise hand feature in Zoom. Uh, and then you've got three minutes. Uh, you're welcome to address the council. It's not really a back and forth Q and A, but if you have something that you want to say or an opinion, um, it's a great time. Would love to hear what people are thinking, uh, wish more people would do it. So I would encourage anyone who wants to to step on up and open up our public comment session. Who wants to start? Anyone? Any hands on, go for it. Come up to the podium and just say who you are and what you want to say.
My name is Bob Lothrip and I live at, uh, on 38 Ward Town Road. First question, actually, and if I'm going against protocol, please let me know. Uh, the lights down on Desert Road, are those going to be a permanent addition or are those just for construction?
I'm fine. Can I answer the question? Yeah. So, uh, usually it's not question, but I could, I want to let you know for sure. Yeah, 100%. Uh, those are not the locations, but there are permanent lights going on both sides of that, of both of the bridge projects as part of the projects, um, both at 22 and at Exit 20. Um, the ones that are strung up now, that's not their final, I mean, they may move those and use those fixtures, but that's not their final location, I don't think. Yeah.
Um, just, you had brought it up.
Yeah, no, no problem. It's a good question. I asked the same question of my staff, so don't, don't worry because it seemed a little bit off to me as well, so.
Thank you. And I think this is on the agenda. There's a property on, um, behind us in the new development back there. Um, I think it's on the agenda for this evening, but I didn't see it on the paper that I grabbed, um, about some drainage that they're talking about. Uh, we're on Ward Town Road and I don't even remember the name of the road behind it. I've never done this before, so.
No, don't, don't worry about it. Yeah.
Um, there's a, there's a property back there that they're looking to expand, um, part of it to be non-draining or something like that.
Is it Renee, Renee Road?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's on project review board.
Is it?
Tomorrow night.
Oh, is it tomorrow night?
Just remember seeing an email about it. But you're welcome to offer your comments and we can pass them along.
Yeah, it's not, it's not here, but I can, before you leave, I can, I'll, I'll text the town staff and make sure that it's on the next project. I'll, I'll get you the information before you leave. So when that, yeah, it's not, we're not dealing with it tonight.
Renee Road, it is tomorrow night, Wednesday, May 18th, at 6 o'clock here. Project Review Board will be talking about Renee Road and a few others.
Okay.
Okay.
Then I won't, I won't.
Well, you, did you say I may present my question?
Yeah, sure.
Um, where, where we are, we seem to have a bit of a drainage problem ourselves. Um, we've got two culverts on either side of our property. And recently, last summer, they dredged the end of one of the culverts and it basically flooded our yard. And I've lost quite a bit of our yard to, uh, I, I can't mow it because I, I can't even get in there. If I go in there, I have to wear high boots to weed whack it. Um, so when I saw this, I was concerned about the other side of the property, us taking on water from that side. And I was just, I thought I would hear from the developers here tonight and I could ask these questions of them. Um, but it, the, the dredging for the drainage out to Florida Lake, I'm told is going to happen within three to five years. But, and I'm getting off topic, but we're going to lose an awful lot of our property due to this if it continues. And I believe, I believe you're our, Chip, as our councilman, and I'd like to actually talk with you at some point about this. Not this evening, um, but at some point. So I was just curious, um,
Yeah, we can, we can follow up. Staff and Chip can follow up with you on the, on the drainage concern, the previous drainage concern, but the new construction is definitely, they're going to be presenting tomorrow.
Tomorrow night, yeah.
I'll make sure that, uh, have you talked with the staff, the planning board staff, Caroline or, or anybody in the planning department? No?
Um, well, last year I came and spoke with the engineer and he hooked me up with, um, the man Earl from DPW who came out, very nice to talk with. But since then, I've seen more and more deterioration. And, um, I'm just three to five years as,
Yeah, we can address that on the staff.
I mean, we love waterfront property.
We'll talk with Chip and one of us, either staff or you, we'll get in touch and we'll figure out what we need to do. But I'll make sure that, um, that the comments tonight, if you, please show up tomorrow night if you want to and listen, but I'll make sure that they,
Okay.
your concerns as well so that staff knows about them, so they're looking for you in the audience tomorrow. Okay?
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks.
And I'd encourage you to take pictures under different conditions.
I, I have.
So you can help explain the story. Yeah, great.
So, but thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I will answer.
No.
We do have a Zoom speaker, so.
Let's bring her over.
This is Joyce Fahey from Down on Flying Point. How are you doing, Joyce?
I'm doing well. Thank you. And, I'm doing very well. Thank you. Tonight I'm here as the chairperson of the Police Advisory Committee, and we are advocating for the town of Freeport to look at establishing a position for a trained mental health or a social services worker to be embedded in the police department. This person would be able to provide intervention, education, outreach and case management. This person would free up the police, um, officers, the patrol officers from many hours worth of following up on cases and searching for different treatment facilities. Um, this person would act independently and would be a connection between residents and the treatment services and facilities throughout, uh, the greater community. And not only would the liaison person, uh, work with the police department, but they would work with all the public safety, um, for PTSD and case reviews, um, and also the town staff. There are quite a few organizations that are providing grants for this type of position, and I think that the town of Freeport needs to start looking at those. Um, it was interesting when we brought the lady who has been in this position in Portland. She's been in Portland for 17 years doing this, and there are over 15 communities in Southern Maine that already have this position. Falmouth, Yarmouth and Cumberland just brought on a department with two positions on board. We're suggesting that we liaison with Pownell and Durham because of our SU5. And so this individual will be working cases in our SU5 and it's just kind of a natural, um, it would be natural for them to have, um, Pownell and Durham in their case area. So we just ask that you keep an open mind and if you'd like to, anybody would like to talk more about it, please feel free to call or email me. I think you all know how to get hold of me or any member of the commission would love to talk to you about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Anyone else on Zoom or in person?
Nobody else on Zoom besides a member of the media, so I'm assuming that they're not looking to speak.
Okay. So if there are no objections, I'll move on to the seventh order of business to take action on the following items, read by the, the chair. Uh, we have four items to act on tonight and then a few discussion items. The first two are both liquor license related. One is a public hearing that we're having tonight for Sam's Italian Food. The second one is a public hearing that we're scheduling tonight for our next meeting for, uh, our new Freeport Oyster Bar. So first we'll deal with a Sam's Italian Food, uh, which is a public hearing for tonight. So Council Pillsbury, would you like to open the public hearing?
Uh, make a motion to open the public hearing. Second.
All in favor of opening the public hearing?
Aye.
Jake, I see a thumbs up from Jake, so we've got seven to zero overall here. So, uh, we have a public hearing. Uh, does, do we have anything we need to say about a liquor license for Sam's Italian Foods? I think it's pretty straightforward. Anything from the clerk or the manager?
Nope. Um, they're back. They've been in town for many years. They're re, they closed for a little bit. They're reopening, um, liquor license is new for them. They have not served liquor there before, so. Uh, however, it's always been a fairly stable, uh, business, not generated any problems. Nothing that is concerning to staff that all of a sudden there'll be problems there. If that changes, then you hear about it then. But I think we assume that they're going to be fine, just like they always have, and no concerns on the staff end.
Let's hear from the public first and then we'll have discussion here. Anybody want to speak to a liquor license for Sam's Italian Foods in support of or against either here in the room or on Zoom?
Nobody on Zoom, Mr. Chip.
Thank you for the support. I assume that's a positive thing. Uh, Council Pillsbury, you want to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Council Daniele is an aye as well, seven to zero. Uh, and Council Pillsbury, you want to read the motion?
No, I, somewhere around here.
We've got to discuss, once he reads it, then we'll discuss.
Be it ordered that a new liquor license for Sam's Italian Food located at 7 Main Street, Freeport be approved.
Second.
And a second. Thank you. So, Council Bradley.
So is, does anyone know whether the reopened Sam's is exactly, being run by exactly the same people who had run it before it closed? No. No idea.
I mean, Chris might. Chris talk, Chris, do you want to come down? Chris talks with them when they drop off their applications, so.
No, these are new owners.
New owners.
Yep.
Okay, then, um, you know, I guess you, you take these things seriously because there's a lot of people and a lot of liquor going through this place, right? I don't have any idea who these people are, and I don't mean that in the sense of, you know, hi, how are you? But, um, if you look at the application, um, it's, it's got Mr. Boyan and Mr. Moran and Mr. Lester, and they are all over the place as managers and owners and applicants. But when you go to the end of it, it is a place that's owned apparently 80% by something called, if I can find it, TransShares. And we know nothing about TransShares. As far as, as far as we know, you know, and I, I don't expect anything I'm saying is true, but we don't know, um, who they are, and we don't know whether they make their own liquor or, or anything about who owns them, whether they're the mafia, whether they're Russians, whether they're, TransShare, which owns 80% of this company that we're about to license to do liquor in our town, um, is, is a dark hole for us. True?
True. The only time that we did background checks is when we had the Vittler license application, you know, the process. So I said the only time that we have done background checks to find out if someone has a clean record like that is when we had the Vittler ordinance, which we just repealed. So that's the only time we've actually delved into people's backgrounds. Like with this one, what we would do, because the state also has their hands in inspecting and licensing the facility and we're just the first level of approvals, um, we've given, with new licenses, we've given the approval. And then if there are problems, the license can be repealed at the state level, so.
Well, we know a lot about Sam's because they answered a lot about Sam's, but they didn't answer much about, of anything about who Sam's is. So that's my comment and, you know, makes me, am I concerned? No. You know, it's, but from a point of view, if I'm asked to do something like this, I'm, I'm concerned. I don't know who it is. I don't know who I'm approving.
And possibly the council could make something where you had us do a background check before a liquor license approval?
Just ask them who they are. I mean, ask the same questions of them as you've asked of everybody else. Where do they live? You know, what's their corporate office? Are they in good standing in the place that they exist? Um, who are their, who are their managers? You know, are there any criminal convictions? All, all the questions that you've asked of everybody else, seems to me you ought to know the answers from TransShare because they're an 80% owner. They, they are the owner, guys. I mean, they're the ones who call the shots, not Mr. Boyan, who has a 5% ownership somewhere in New York. I may be the only one concerned, but that was my concern.
I mean, they still have to follow all the state liquor laws, so violation of any of which is reason to suspend a license. Generally, the way that these are reviewed, um, if somebody is a known problem, for example, a previous restaurant, uh, has caused problems and, um, when the new license comes up, the town in those cases, I'm thinking like a few municipalities around here before have not approved them because there's a known entity that has caused problems in their town before. That's the only reason I've ever seen them denied. I think the assumption is always that the applicant is, um, unless otherwise known as a problem, the applicant is good to go for once. I mean, I guess, I don't think we've ever done a background check. You guys are going to be in front of us. I don't think we've background checked the Oyster Bar and, I mean, there might be.
But Ed knows who we are.
No, but not, not only that, I know how they answered, I know how each of them answered this, this question, questionnaire. And they've all said they're, they've never been convicted. They've got no problems. Trans, whatever it is, hasn't said a word, except I own 80% of the company. It's giving you all the answers about other people. So, you know, if it's a ridiculous statement, I, I disagree, but, you know, I, I just think TransShares should not be allowed to come into Freeport without answering the questions on our questionnaire. That's all. Ask them.
I think it would be difficult at the corporate level to ask, have you ever been convicted of a crime? Like, you know, like each of the board members?
Corporate officer. That's what you've asked Sam's.
Yeah.
Sam's has been very forthright and transparent with you. TransShare has, has said nothing to you other than they are the owner. And if they own 80%, they are also, I guarantee, uh, the person who sets policy for this company. Although maybe not. Maybe it's just a straight financial agreement and that, and maybe they could say that. I, I'm uncomfortable. That's all. I'll, I'll shut up.
I know Sam's is anxious to get opened. I know they're anxious to get this liquor license, but if you would like, we can bring this, re, you know, reset a public hearing, have another hearing after we hear back from the corporation.
I'd be happy to have staff get the information and approve, do this conditional on staff approval of the information from TransAmerica. I'm not trying to hold up Sam's or keep people from pizza or, you know, mozzarella or whatever they want, but I, I am uncomfortable.
Council Fornier?
I, I guess, uh, the question I have, doing a bunch of licenses for a good many years in this town, uh, I never know of situations, the manager said, we went in unless they were bad actors.
Right.
So I, 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 I can understand where you're coming from, Ed. I guess I would be comfortable in supporting if, if staff does a background. I don't want to see it held up, uh, uh, but if we could approve it with a conditional and, and staff does a background on that. But I think we have a, a lot of businesses that are owned from other state that are operating in the community, uh, quite regular.
We did see that with the Vittler licenses, that there was a lot that were corporations and it became very difficult to do the background checks because they have to have a date of birth to run a background check, and then we needed to have the dates of births of all the, um, corporate members and it, you know, it was difficult.
Council Pillsbury?
So, well, I don't disagree with you, Ed. I mean, the way our process works, right? I mean, they've filled out the form as they were supposed to. If we want to make a change to say something like, you know, if your percent ownership is greater than 50%, you know, we ask for the same form to be completed by the holding company or whoever that is. But I think as it, as it stands now, I mean, we're, we're kind of making the assumption that they're guilty before, you know, anything's been done. I, I, I just, they've completed our process. If we want to change the process, I'm, I'm fine with that. But I, I just think the way that it stands now, they've, they've checked the boxes, so.
I think part of the process is that this was published publicly. I think part of the process is that this was published publicly two weeks ago, published as well tonight. That's why we have the public hearing, so that if somebody knows something about any of the owners or corporate entities or the building, or anything that they wanted to say, they could come tonight and say, hey, I know these guys, and they're bums, and you shouldn't give them a license. You know, seeing that no one has spoken, I'm comfortable granting the license. Though, I will point out, as Council Bradley directed me to the table, the percentage of ownership includes eighty percent for team shares, ten percent for another owner, ten percent for the employees, and then another five percent for the president, which adds up to one hundred and five percent.
It's a big company.
Very suspicious.
So I assume that's a clerical error, so if they want to correct that, I encourage them to do that when they come back.
I will just add that we can't change that form. That comes from state liquor licensing. That's their form that they complete and submit to us.
And to be clear, the process tonight is the public hearing that's required for the state to grant the license. That has to be held by the municipality, correct?
That is correct.
That's what we were talking, I think what you and Dan were talking about, right? About the timing and all that. There's a state statutory process that has to be followed for the hearing. Do we have, is, how would, how would the town, let's just say hypothetically, I'm not saying this is the case. Hypothetically, though, the town knows there's a bad actor involved and wants to do something about it. Do we not approve the application and we would give that to the state?
I mean, you could deny it at the municipal level, and they would never get state approval. They would probably go through an appeal process.
Right. But we are the kind of veto on the state license being granted, that public hearing at the local level, right? I'm just trying to get the, where we fit in the structure so that if the council doesn't want to vote, they know what we're going to be doing.
We're the first level that can say no.
And then the state also has the ability not to grant it if they don't meet state standards.
And then if we did, and it went up to the state, they could also say no and override us, yeah?
I agree with Matt. What I'm saying, they're guilty before they get here. If they come in and they mess up, I think we've probably got a way that we can get around and correct it. So, you know, we try to bring business to the community, and, you know, so I hear what Ed's saying, but I think our process has worked. We haven't had too many problems in the past, so, you know, I'm in favor of approving it tonight.
The clerk's office has a very good relationship with liquor licensing, and we, they will advocate for us. Like, for instance, if someone had a Vitteler license that they weren't renewing, this liquor licensing would work with us to hold their liquor license, to get them to get their, you know. So liquor licensing is, we have a good relationship with them, so.
Council Daniele wants to weigh in.
Thank you, Mr. Pills. So I Googled it really quickly, and they did write a sun, the Sun Journal wrote a piece about it. Team Shares is a financial technology company based in New York that specializes in transitioning small businesses into employee-owned operations. And I looked at their website quickly, and they have about fifty businesses stated that they operate right now. So I, I don't know if that alleviates some of your concerns, Council Bradley.
Thanks, Jake.
Thanks, Jake. All right. Everybody ready for a vote on this one? All right, all in favor of granting Sam's liquor license?
Aye.
And Jake is an aye as well, seven to zero. Thank you.
And my vote comes because of Jake's work.
Well done, Council Daniele. All right, our next liquor license item is to consider action relative to setting a public hearing for our next meeting for the Freeport Oyster Bar. So all we're doing tonight is scheduling the hearing. If you want to say something, you can. Don't have to. Wait till the public...
We have a hearing right now.
You can't have a public hearing right now. If you do, just head up to the podium before, if you do want to say something. Yeah, it's fine. We could chat more next time. Okay. Council Fornier, would you read the be it ordered?
Certainly. Be it ordered, the public hearing is set for June 7th, 2022, at the Freeport Council meeting. It starts at 6:00 PM to discuss a new liquor license application for a Freeport Oyster Bar at 43 Main Street, Freeport. Be further ordered that copies be distributed equally between Town Clerk's office, Town Manager's office, and the Freeport Community Library for inspection by citizens during normal business hours, and that the notice be placed in Freeport's local cable channel three and the town's website.
Second.
Thank you. I will say, I've been in touch with Ken from the Freeport Oyster Bars, very eager.
Very eager. I think we, so I have to...
Do you mind stepping up to the...
I would be happy.
Thank you. Very, you're very patient, I might add.
Otherwise, no one can hear you.
Yes, no one can hear me if I speak from my seat. So, I'll just say, you know, I think we would have been doing this a few weeks ago, except I screwed up and put the pile of papers in the wrong pile of papers. There's a lot of papers, and that's, I don't know if there's a checklist that we could have for future businesses or how we want to do it, but we, I think someone said earlier, we'd like to have more businesses in Freeport. And, you know, I was doing some outreach today for Tani, trying to get somebody to fill one of those empty storefronts, and there's an awful lot of them. And we've got to make it easier. We can't worry about what kind of wires running into conduit when the conduit is just there to look pretty. There's a lot of, you know, it's an interesting process that we have here in Freeport. And it's, I want to be able to go to my friends out in the community, right, that I work with, the entrepreneurs that are out there, the restaurateurs that we sell oysters to, and say, oh, you guys, you definitely want to open up a place in Freeport, because that's what we need. And if there's any way to make it easier, please, please make it easier. And thanks for getting rid of the Victueller's license. That was a good, that was a plus. That was wonderful, and let's keep moving that kind of stuff along. But I'm sorry, I put my papers in the wrong stack of papers.
You have a vote?
I'll just give you some feedback. We tried to figure out a way to get this, to set the public hearing for this meeting.
Thank you.
And we have a statute in terms of the state, as you just heard lots of discussion on the previous one, about control over the licensing. So, we didn't want to, we were trying to find a way to get to that, to meet your needs without breaking state law, and we couldn't.
Well, I don't want you to break any state laws because then you'd never get a liquor license of your own. However, if there's any way that the town council can look at this and say, here's our signature, run it up to the state, and know that Thomas and I, I mean, Ally will break our legs if Thomas and I don't listen, we would hand that liquor license right back to you the day that you had a bunch of people standing up here with pitchforks that said, no oyster bar in downtown Freeport, that's horrible. Just a thought.
I think we can make that available that evening, because it's a signature which then can be driven up to Augusta.
Well, I will be, I will be up there in Augusta on the 8th, and they'll be waiting for me, if that's what I have to do.
I think you know who's going to be in your office.
Ken Sparta.
Council Bradley?
Tom, you didn't sign this?
I'm happy to sign it.
I know you will, but I just want to say that you didn't, so do it. Because you're one of the co-applicants.
Absolutely.
Congratulations on doing the math. It's up to a hundred percent, so.
Did you get a hundred percent?
You got a hundred percent.
I don't know if everybody's met Ally, but Ally is our manager.
Is Ally Allison Edmund? Is that the same Ally?
And Ken is fifty percent of the business, and I'm fifty-five.
I'll write that in. For sure.
All right, super. I look forward to seeing you guys on June 7th, and I can't wait to stop in and have oysters and liquor. So, with that, can we call for a vote on setting the public hearing for the Freeport Oyster Bar for June 7th? All in favor?
Aye.
And Council Daniele is an aye, seven to zero. So, you are on the agenda, you will be on the agenda for June 7th, and hopefully in Augusta on June 8th.
And after the hearing, they can sign it, and we can hand it to you so you can get out of here at 8:15 or whatever, 7:15, whatever time that is. You don't have to stay for the whole meeting or show up the next morning to Chris's window.
You're welcome to stay for the whole meeting, but you don't have to.
It gets fun.
We can bring refreshments for after, just saying.
When do we vote? When do we vote?
All right, moving on. The next item, three, item number 105-22, is about foreclosures to consider action relative to 2024 closures. And I think we have our finance director who's going to introduce this item for us.
Yep, and I can give a little bit of background on the action. Jessica, why don't you give the intro? And I've even got a little more information from the facilities committee meeting when they discussed it, too, to go into after you're done.
Sure. Yeah, so the article before you now is to be able to authorize the foreclosure of 93 Pleasant Hill Road. Peter and I met with the municipal facility committee, and it was agreed that it would be in the best interest of the town to continue with the historical practice of a public bid process, sealed bid process. And so before we begin that, we just need to come before council for final authorization to proceed with the public bid sale. And this is a, this is a land and building situation. I do not believe it is a primary residence for the homeowner. They own other property in another town. And in speaking with this homeowner, the last payments that were made were for the 2019 taxes, and he is not in a financial situation to be able to maintain this property in addition to his homestead property. And being that it's a non-conforming lot, he's, I get the impression he's unwilling to invest the funds to make it a conforming lot in order to be able to potentially do something with it. So, that is why it is before you today.
What's the timeframe on it if we move it forward tonight? What happens next?
So the next part of the process would be to advertise the sale. We would probably put, you know, maybe, I don't know, we usually go for maybe six weeks. We would put a notice on our website and around, in the newspaper, and set a date for when bids would be due, and then we would bring it back before council to approve the bid, any eligible bid that comes in at that time.
Thank you.
Council Fornier?
One thing we did discuss during the municipal facilities meeting, and it was to add a administrative fee that has occurred over the years to put on, which will be a minimum bid requirement. And I thought that was a great idea that keeps our interest of what we put into it, so I was very pleased with that.
Good idea, thank you. Council Bradley?
I don't understand what converting to a conforming lot means. In other words, what needs to be done to convert this property to a conforming lot? And will it be done before or after the auction or the bid process?
Yeah, it would not be done before the auction because that would put the effort on behalf of the town to make it conforming, and it would be on behalf of the bid winner. But I think Peter wanted to address some of that.
So there was a little bit of question at the meeting over what the exact issue with the property is. So it was divided incorrectly, and there is a fifty-foot right-of-way drawn and granted through the building, the structure itself that's on the property, to the lot behind it, which was split off from it. So, the front lot is non-conforming because the structure doesn't meet setbacks, and it's also non-conforming because the right-of-way goes through, for the back lot, goes through the actual building or through the building footprint, the building setback, one or the other.
Correct.
There are three people essentially who could make the lot conforming, which are the three abutting property owners, left, right, and back. Any of them could buy and make the lot conforming. So, an average person is not going to be able to buy it and occupy the house. The house may, I think the house is going to come down for any of the people who buy it. They're going to buy the land as excess acreage to add to their parcel. If it's, though, if it is bought by an abutter, the house or the right-of-way, there's the possibility either of those two could be relocated on the property. The house is a very small old structure, but perhaps somebody still wants to use it. So the house could be relocated, or the right-of-way could be relocated, possibly, depending which abutter wants to buy it, and if there's agreement from the back abutter that lets the right-of-way be moved amicably, and it somehow corrects the setback violations that exist on the property because of the construction.
Right. So there's multiple ways for them to fix a non-conforming issue.
I just, but we're collecting some money here, right?
Yep.
Okay. And we're adding to this a condition which is going to make this property less saleable.
No.
Why?
Because the only people that are going to want it are the only people that are going to tear it down.
Well, maybe. I understand, but you, why do it? If somebody buys it, that's what they're going to want to do. If they don't want to do it, why do we care?
What do you mean?
And if making it a condition reduces the amount of money we get, because it keeps it to three possible buyers, who are the only ones who can fix this, right?
Well, I don't think we want to convey a property that's non-conforming and have somebody else buy it and come back to us and say, why didn't you tell me this was non-conforming?
It's a violation.
Put it right in the notice, non-conforming lot. Maybe, maybe there's twenty people in this town that are willing to do some, I don't know. How would anyone know?
Yeah, but somebody can't, you or I can't buy it and make it conforming. The only way to make it conforming is adding it to an adjacent piece of land.
Because it's not big enough to be built on.
It's a violation by itself.
So if you buy it and it's non-conforming, you've bought a violation of the law? Or have you bought a piece of land?
Bought a one-way ticket to 80K territory Superior Court and locked in a legal battle with the town.
What does that mean?
So you buy the land, you now hold the violation with no way to correct it.
So you, so, okay, so...
So why would we sell it to somebody?
You could correct it by tearing down the house and just saying, I have a plot of land.
The land is non-conforming.
The land itself or the building?
The land is non-conforming, and the building is also non-conforming.
How can the land, how can I, the land itself be non-conforming?
Because somebody wrote a deed to themselves and split the land in half without ever following the law.
Oh, so splitting off the lot was...
The same way that all, the same way that ninety percent of the land violations exist is somebody recorded a deed without going through the municipal approval process and without getting adequate legal review fifteen or twenty years ago whenever it was done. And we find out about it when it goes to something like this, when someone opens the file and looks at what can be done with the property, and it's an illegal lot. However, any of the abutting properties could buy it. This is one of several that we've had over the past, in my memory at least, where there has been a non-conforming lot that couldn't be used for any other purpose, but it is, as excess acreage, it may have a ten or twenty or thirty thousand dollar value to the abutting property owner.
I understand that, but you're saying like, if I bought it, tore the house down, own, this is sort of to go to Dan's question, and decided that it was just a great spot for my family and I to have a picnic, we would be in violation of some town ordinance on...
Yeah, I believe the lot is non-conforming the way it was created. It was illegally divided.
Like they can make no use of a non-conforming lot.
You can't go and unsplit the lot unless you own both halves of it.
Say I don't care about unsplitting. Say I just want to go have a picnic there.
Right, so you own a subdivision violation.
Maybe.
Right.
That's my question. So your opinion at this point is, if someone were to buy this without fixing the subdivision?
Take your mic.
Your position is that if someone were to buy this without fixing the problem that existed when it was subdivided, they would be subject to municipal enforcement of some kind and have to pay, subject to a fine?
Sure, you could not enforce it, that's always an option, but they are going to be...
Okay.
The interpretation is that they would then be holding a violation that the town would just not be doing anything about.
But in the meantime, they would have to pay property tax on it.
Sure.
Could they...
It's going to be a very low property tax because there's very low value to the property, but still, you're still holding a violation. The only value it really has to anybody are to the abutters.
Right, but if they had an agreement with an abutter and they increased the size of the lot, is there a way they could fix it that way? Somebody else could?
Yep, sure.
Right, if an abutter agreed to, you know, sell them a portion of their land that...
Like if somebody needs half an acre, and the abutter has two acres, and they want to sell quarter of an acre to the other, if they want to do a three-way deal and an adjustment, yes. You have to, in the condition that the, sorry, I was going to say project review, or that the facilities committee placed on it was not just, we're not just selling it to an abutter, but by making, because that was the original proposal from staff.
Right, the proposal was that.
Can we get the best deal from the three abutters? But the facilities committee said, nope, just put it out there. Maybe somebody else has, you know, I haven't looked at the abutting lots and what they have, but if somebody has a way that they can make it conforming, go for it. But you would have to make a change to the lot and likely to the structure, either moving it or removing it to make the lot conforming. So, if you, if somebody is interested and they want to go knock on the doors of all three properties around there and see if there's any deal that can be done, and come in and talk with planning staff about whether that would satisfy the issue on the property, they should do that, yep. Unlikely, but not impossible.
So it would be, you have, you buy the lot, you have to make it conforming.
Right.
Or you can do it within a certain amount of time.
As a condition of the sale, correct?
Yeah.
So we're not, because otherwise... So we're not, because otherwise we're conveying a violation to somebody and.
What if we put it out there and nobody bids on it?
We still own it.
So we just, it's a town or freeport property that.
It is as of today, or as of February eighteenth. It's been.
We've already, okay.
Oh, yeah. We, we acquired it on the eighteenth.
So auto, so tax foreclosure happens automatically when somebody doesn't pay their bill on time?
So we own our.
Unless the council, unless the council waives it and lets the prior owner essentially walk away from their debt and keep the property.
Can I throw out a crazy suggestion? But if we own a non-conforming lot with a house on it and we choose not to enforce the violation, can we make that house available for the urgent housing crisis that we have? People who are looking for houses, even on a temporary basis?
You could, the council can agree to do anything to not enforce any provision of your own ordinances you want. This is one of our own ordinances, so the council can make that decision. I would always recommend you only do that if there's a public benefit and it seems like you've identified something that could be a public benefit. So I think that's, I don't think that's malfeasance to talk about it at least. I think you're, if you're allowing to allow a violation to continue in the public benefit.
I'm guessing we'd have to look at the house and deal with any code violations before. We would want to effectively be landlords of the house.
The problem is that you become.
Someone's going to live in.
Like, that's given me a lot of heartburn because you become the landlord and you're legally responsible for, you know.
Insurance and liability and utilities.
But there may be.
Fixing the non-conforming part of it, right? Which.
If you look at the property, when you say a house, it, it's basically a one-bedroom with a kitchen, living room. It's a very small, I would consider it a large workshop. So I'm not sure, that has been vacant for a number of years, if they were even allowed to live in. So, you know, if they weren't allowed to live in it, it hasn't been occupied, occupied for a number of years. So I think we're heading down a dangerous road.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I, I support the, you know, the proposal to put it out to bid and see what happens. Makes sense.
So is that what we're voting on tonight, to put it out to bid?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
So any other discussion before we vote on that? All right. We got to read that into the agenda here, so I think we're up to Councilor Lawrence.
We are. Be it ordered, the town treasurer be authorized to foreclose on the following property, zero one eight dash zero nine zero dash zero zero eight dash zero zero zero, ninety-three Pleasant Hill Road. Zero point seven acres, land valuation seventy-eight thousand one hundred, building valuation thirty-seven thousand two hundred. Be it further ordered that the town manager be authorized to sign any deeds or documents necessary to execute these, these transfers disposals.
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Fornier. Any further discussion before we vote?
A question, is this, is this to, so if you get a bid, you sell it? No matter what it is, if it's three dollars?
No.
How, how does that work?
Uh, we typically establish a reserve or a baseline bid that's for all back taxes, interest and fees associated with the property.
So if you get all the back taxes, which is ten thousand dollars?
A little less than that, yeah.
Then you'll sell it?
We would come back before the council to auth, well, actually, I'm sorry, this authorizes him to sign that. So yes, that would, if it meets those, we go with the high bid as long as it meets.
We have nothing to say about, we, we, we are, by saying yes to this, passing it on to you to handle.
Correct.
According to your judgment about whether that's a fair value.
The, correct. The town manager's assessment of that value, correct.
And the guidance from the facilities committee, which was, get what we're owed for.
Which was what we talked about, yeah.
Plus some of your, whatever your, not just fees and.
Administrative costs, correct.
But your, whatever the time to deal with it, which is probably a couple thousand dollars of staff time that had been used to deal with it. That was the guidance of the facilities committee to make us whole.
So we're going to, I'm just, so we're going to sell something that's worth seventy-eight thousand dollars for ten?
Not necessarily. It's a public bid process. So, I mean, we've, we've had.
If the ten is offered.
We've had great success in the past on property sales. Back in, I want to say twenty sixteen or possibly seventeen, we sold about a dozen properties in town and they all went far above their market, their back tax balance. Because you're, you're bidding against an unknown and, I, I mean, one person that bought a property, I remember they had a whole segment of how they came up with their number and they won it by seventy-eight cents over the other bid because seventy-eight was, I don't know, the year she was born or something like that and just tack that on at the last minute. So, you know, you, people are creative in what they come up with to make sure they get it.
I also want to add that the, the land valuation that it was taxed on, when it was being used as a dwelling, was seventy-eight thousand one hundred dollars.
Right.
Going to be that one violation on it now, isn't it?
Right. Now that it's understood that it's not a buildable lot, the, if it was by itself and not with a house on it used as a dwelling, there's no way it'll be worth seventy-eight thousand one hundred dollars. It'll be worth whatever the sale price is essentially and whatever the excess acreage is worth two and a butter. There's no way around that. Next year, if this wasn't moved and it was left on the books, the assessor would not evaluate it as a building lot.
Correct.
Now that it's been discovered it's not a conforming building lot. And since we would in theory not let somebody use it anymore, like a single-family dwelling because we've discovered it's a violation, seventy-eight thousand one hundred is fair when it's allowed to be used as a dwelling. But if we're taking and saying it can never be used as a dwelling again, it would not support seventy-eight thousand one hundred dollars.
So the value.
So the value becomes seventy, thirty-seven thousand dollars. Because that's what the land is.
That's what the building. There's, there is an excess acreage value to that, you know, of thousands of dollars per acre, not a hundred thousand dollars per acre like a building lot would be. It's, you know, might be worth five thousand dollars to the abutter or something like that. It's a, it's not nothing, but it's negligible from a taxation purpose.
Any other discussion before we vote? All right. We are voting on the item one oh five dash twenty-two. All in favor.
Aye.
And Councilor Daniele has a thumbs up as well. Seven to zero. Item passes. Thank you.
Welcome.
Lloyd, don't go anywhere because our next item is.
I do have one question.
Yeah.
How are we taxing him? For that amount?
Seventy-eight thousand, plus the thirty-seven thousand.
Even though it's not conforming and he can't use it and he's not leaving.
Not, not anymore going forward if you were to.
I know that. I got, I got that. But since it was discovered and he can't use it, I.
It was just discovered in this tax year. So, so the, the taxes that are owed on it were before that issue was made aware. So, yeah. I mean, theoretically, the assessor could fix the upcoming assessment and I would have to come before council like this next item, agenda item to say, hey, this shouldn't have been taxed, you guys need to write it off.
But for the current.
We're selling it anyway, so.
For the current, and that happens when we, when we pursue violations, in certain cases, people are like, great, now I own something that's not a buildable lot. I want my valuation to be five thousand dollars. And they get it. And when there's a, when it's discovered that somebody's holding a piece of adjacent land that was taxed at a hundred and fifty thousand dollar valuation because they thought it was a building lot and it's no longer a building lot, it's reduced to excess acreage that year that it's discovered. So that's typically how it goes.
Mm-hmm.
Which is only fair from a taxation perspective. You no longer have use of the property, the potential use of the property, you don't have to pay taxes on it, so.
Correct.
All right. Do you care to introduce writing off our two thousand twenty-one taxes on the following property?
Yes. So we have a duplicate assessment on Smiling Acre Drive. The tac, town assessor was able to abate the current year assessment that was done in, duplicate assessment that was done in error, but because this is last year's taxes, it has to come before council for approval of, of being written off. So it's, it was taxed under another map and lot. When you look at the mapping of the, of the lots, it was included under another unit and was duplicately added under this one and changed it. And then this happened when it was a new, a new, yes, a new transfer of ownership.
Got it.
Once taxes are committed, the reason it's in front of you, once taxes are committed, the write-off has to be.
Has to be a process to take them off.
Yep. As the collector, I, you don't want me to have the authority to be able to write off taxes that have been committed because that's how fraud happens. So that's why it comes to you.
Makes sense. All right. Councilor Bradley, do you want to read the be it ordered on that?
Be it ordered that the town treasurer be authorized to write off the two thousand twenty-one taxes on the following property, zero one eight dash zero one two dash zero zero five dash three zero, Smiling Acres Drive, land only because it was a duplicate assessment.
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Lawrence. Any discussion? All right. Ready to move on and vote for this one? All in favor?
Aye.
Daniele has an aye as well.
Right back.
Yeah, so that item passes seven to zero as well. Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
I assume you're not going home just yet.
Not just yet.
You've got more to talk to us about. Okay. So that's all our action items. We're not going to take any more votes tonight. We don't anticipate taking any more votes tonight. We've got three items to chat about. Parklets, short-term rentals, and our budgets.
Funny that you say we're not taking any votes because I'm about to ask you to give me at least a straw poll here, which is new development, so sorry to.
Okay.
Sorry to fake you out like that.
This is the parklet one?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, do you want to talk to us about what's going on with the parklets?
Sure. So there's two parts to this. The first is a recent development. M dot, in theory, has to consent to these locations. The, the proposal from staff is to replace the parklet that was placed last year. It was constructed for this specific site, the height of the curb and all that kind of stuff. And it's immediately to the side of the front of derosers there. So the proposal is to replace that. DOT is actually going to be looking for the, and for a discussion of this and affirmative action from the council, which I did not know because we, they did it last year and they said, great, they approved it. But they said they want to see minutes from the council. That was just today. So I am going to ask at least for a straw poll for, that, that'll be part one, for those that are in favor of replacing the existing one that was constructed in the same manner. It would only be force cost of actually replacing the structure so there is some cost to the town from a lost, you know, cost opportunity of them not doing other work. It public works tomorrow, you know, during the day, but for an hour or two, there would be no new construction cost though. The maintenance and furnishing and all that is actually going to be taken on by local businesses. So derosers will do the maintenance. There's actually furniture that's going to be provided. There's discussion out there where that's coming from. It's not going to be from the town. I believe LL Bean may have committed some outdoor patio furniture and there may be some other sources of decorations and furniture from the business community. So, so that's part one. Part two is, I, I know that that was chosen as a location of convenience because it was quick and could be gotten done quickly, relatively quickly last year. We haven't gotten yet any inquiries from other property owners or business owners adjacent to them, but I do want to just talk about my thoughts on how we would go about if somebody approached us for another location and maybe get some feedback from the council on whether you think that's appropriate, whether, you know, the parklet's in general are a terrible idea and they should just, we should limit it to that one, whether we should do them all over town, whether there should be some process, some approval process or whatever. So, so I guess we can start at the top. The first one being the replacement of the parklet where it existed last year, adjacent to derosers property. Is there any feedback, the council or anybody on the council that's not favorable to that placement?
Councilor Bradley, you have a comment or you?
I have a question. I, I mean, it, it seems to me that this is now not a pop-up to design to develop information for principal group, but it's a follow-on to principal group's recommendations. I don't know who makes those decisions and I certainly don't want to, I don't want to see them made without the process that goes with the prioritization for implementation of all the principal group's recommendations. So, I mean, why pick this one? Why not pick the Memorial Park Bandstand or something else? Is there something that I don't know about this parklet that makes it low, let's call it low-hanging fruit for principal group's set of, of action recommendations? What part does this decision we're making play in the adoption of action items that principal group has presented to us, which we are still developing a process at this council to deal with? Just seems to be a little bit early for, for that for me, unless there's something I don't know, which is always the case on this issue. There's always stuff going on that's in the background somewhere that I'd like to hear about.
Yeah. Off of my, my opinion, I, I mentioned at the top of the meeting where we are at the process and the list of the eighty items from principal group. We've had a similar discussion, you and I, so I don't think you missed much. But there is a process for prioritizing all the eighty items. I don't, this one, I don't even know if it's on that list of eighty items. This was a, a quick hit, early action, the spirit of try it, see if the community likes it. If the community likes it, keep doing it. If the community doesn't like it anymore. I don't know that this project affects any other project. If we do this, it doesn't mean we don't do another one. There's not a budget request for it. So I, to me, it's a standalone project. It's, it's beyond the principal group and the prioritization exercise that we still have to go through. This is something that happened to come out of the work that they helped us with early on, but.
With respect, there are other early action projects.
We've got skate parks, which is back in this year as well.
So these are, this one is one that's already been, it was done last year and we just want to put it back out again this year while we're getting the rest of the plan out there. And I.
My, my thoughts are that we should put it out there because everyone seemed to enjoy it. And, and this is really low-hanging fruit and we can see how it works again this year. Maybe we change it next year. But right now, while we're waiting for what all the processes are and what might be permanently there, this is just the next way to add that back.
Yeah, I would tack on to that. I do think there is a phase when these go away, which is if, as part of a redesign of Main Street, that the complete streets committee and some outcome of the, the working group that Dan mentioned at the beginning of the committee and the town council approves an alternate design and Main DOT approves an alternate design for Main Street that doesn't include that parklet, that doesn't include parking spots. I, I think at that point, we wouldn't have them in those locations. We either install a permanent feature or seating feature or a sidewalk bump out or something like that, or nothing, or it would stay parking. I think you'd make the permanent decision then. But that's, the reconstruction of Main Street is several years down the road here, so.
Yeah, I, again, I'm not trying to create a, a problem here, but I, I wish I had the confidence you have, Peter, in exactly how things are going to go because I don't see any clear direction, see starts to how it's going to go. I see a lot ahead of us and as long as the, the representation is that things that were done like this in the startup phase that seem to have public support are just going to be continued until those final decisions are made, I guess I'm okay.
Councilor Fornier?
I've got a couple of questions. So we're eliminating a couple of parking spots on Main Street and, and so we need I've got a couple of questions. So we're eliminating a couple of parket spots on Main Street and, and so we need to be aware of that. So if another business wants to come in, are we going to allow it? Maybe we're going to have a great oyster bar. Maybe they want to put some barriers out there.
Yep.
And I, if I'm going to vote for this, I want to treat everyone fair.
Yeah.
And, uh, so if we're going to go down this road, we're going to go down the road. So are we prepared to go down the road?
I'm, I fully was anticipating that, which is part two of the conversation that I think that I could use feedback on is do we want to establish a formal approval process for future ones of these? Review process? I mean, I don't have that here tonight. I just want to know whether you want us to do that work to come up with the process. Uh, we have not been approached by other owners, but you're exactly right. Like, for example, not probably not going to be Ken's operation where they're located, but somebody else adjacent to there, uh, you know, across the street from you guys, there's a new restaurant, there's a few other spots. So I think places like that would be very interested in talking with us, so.
I think that we probably should have a process and plan at least until, and it's only for the time period between now and what we adopt and what we decide we're going to do for the, just in case someone asks.
Yeah.
That's all. So I would say, yeah, go ahead and do that. And then we got to figure out how we're going to determine what, what makes sense, but I think Principal Group's already kind of determined where those things might work best.
I don't know that they've done specific parklet spots. I think their recommendation was you should try parklets.
I guess.
Yeah.
How did we figure out, we could go through the process, how do we figure out that spot? And I know it was because it was quick and easy, but.
Yeah, I think.
It's kind of, it's got enough space there.
They identified that in that initial.
Yeah, that one they did, yeah.
Couple of suggestions for the early action plan that they did a year ago that, which is how it came to our attention and we said, oh, I guess, I think.
But they didn't do any others, I don't know.
Not at that time, no. There is a parking spot, but also it takes up the loading zone there.
Yep.
And, uh, the loading zone is for that business and the adjacent business and they were both fine with it going away last year that it's like, nope, the people can park a little bit forward and walk an extra 15 feet when they're delivering our food products or something like that, so.
Yeah. So I think if we have that process in place, and I think it would go a long way to be able to do what you want, what we should all be doing, make it fair for everybody.
I guess, and I guess the question is if we don't want to entertain them at all, tell me now and we'll shut people off when they come in and sniff around and say, hey, I'd like to do one of those things. And I'd say, hey, the council really doesn't support doing more of those, so it's probably going to be an uphill battle. Don't waste your time. If you do support maybe examining other locations, then we'll, we'll review them with people. We'll kind of maybe come up with a proposal and bring them to you for approval.
I, I like sitting outside. I think it's a great idea and if we can do it in short order, I think that's what we should do.
Counselor Pillsbury?
Uh, can, can you define parklet for me?
Yeah. You mean like Merriam-Webster or just our definition of what we're using?
What we're talking about, so when a business comes and says, I want to do this, we know, oh, this is clearly a parklet.
Inside, something that's inside the right-of-way. So a seating area, um, some type of a park feature, a mini park feature that's typically within the road right-of-way. So that could be the sidewalk. If it's an area that's a wide sidewalk, somebody could propose something going in on the town sidewalk that has some type of, you know, rest area, lounge feature, dining area. Uh, there's a few different ways that they're done. Typically, they've been done across the country lately as restaurants, bump outs into parking or into breakdown lanes, um, that are protected by barriers for.
Or wide, wide sidewalks.
Yeah, or where there are wide sidewalks. We got a few locations in town where the sidewalks are within the right-of-way where a business owner could say, hey, can I use that eight-foot-wide stretch of brick sidewalk in front of my business to put a seating area in or expand my business out into it and not their property. So we don't have to say yes, but I think one of the things that we've considered is sure, show us a proposal. That's how we get to the one in front of DeRozier's and.
Well, I'm terrified because I don't think DeRozier's came to us and said, would you put a parklet in front of my business?
Principal said, well, can you put it there? We went to them and they said, yeah, we love the.
Would you mind if we put one, if the town puts one in front of your business? And he said, yeah, I'd be happy to do it and I'd, I'd in fact take care of it and decorate it. Which is what I would suggest for our process going forward. It's not the businesses apply to us, but if we get wind of something that might work, because we've got to figure out that that spot might work. So there may be a restaurant that says, I'd love to have a parklet and we look at the space and says, well, there's no way to put a parklet there safely.
And people had conversations last year with several restaurants at the time and asked and nobody else was interested, including several that said, yeah, the idea is really interesting, but I don't have the capacity to do outdoor seating, so good luck to you.
Right. Right.
So I don't know that they're out there. Just if they are, I want to have a like a blessing to go ahead and talk with people, not just not be wasting everyone's time.
Counselor Fournier?
Two, two points. Number one, uh, one question I had, uh, why Billy Wise? Where are we on this? If God forbid, Dr. Trailer avoids a progression and goes into that with people sitting, is it our responsibility?
Um, I mean, everything's always our responsibility. Everyone's going to try to sue us for everything that happens. First of all, is the safe assumption you should assume is is the town, anybody that gets injured on a town piece of property, there's a potential lawsuit behind it. The key, the, the real legal consideration where we start getting beyond tort claims protections in the state of Maine is if there's negligence. So when these are put outside, there is a standard that's used. Maine DOT does not approve them without Jersey barriers that are angled. Maine DOT does the review. Adam had to send a site plan. They made sure it was at least 45-degree angle. I mean, I think that, not an attorney, but I think that gets us away from negligence if we're using an established standard. Now, if somebody said, hey, this is patently unsafe here, there's a problem. There's a gap. A truck's going to come in and hit somebody. And then a truck comes in and hits somebody and you've been placed on notice to a condition and then, uh, you do nothing about it, that is an extreme exclusion from the tort claims limitations. So um, there are situations where if they're not maintained correctly or if there are problems and we don't do anything about them, that we could be on the hook for major problems. I think we've done what the accepted state standard is to put seating areas within a right-of-way at this point in time. Um, so I don't want to say we'd never be, we're always going to be subject to being sued.
Correct. I understand that.
I think we've, I think we've covered our butts to the same extent that all other municipalities that do this do.
Very good.
But there's always, there's always an exposure there. Sorry, go ahead, Darryl.
Second question. Last year was, uh, the last couple of years, but I'm president for businesses. So not only in the downtown area, but we had businesses outside of the town that set up tents. I thought it was great. We ate outside or whatever. My question is, will you approve this and a business down on Route One South gives in and says, hey, I had a tent up last year that we, we served our customers. I want to make sure that they get the same options and they're going to be treated the same and not told that, oh, you got to have a sprinkler system in here or you got to have this. So if, if we go down this road, I want it to go down the road townwide and I want it to be a goods, good, uh, process to go through, number one, and, and number two, something that's reasonable for the people that want to do it. So if you, if you, can you show me that? I'm in.
I could take us to have that one. The separate then stuff in the town right-of-way, earlier this year, I think it was, we approved easing up on a lot of the regulations for temporary outdoor seating. So if somebody wants to put a tent on their property, it's a lot easier now to do than it has been in the past. I know we've got people that have done that. So my guess is if somebody said, I want a parklet in front of my business on Route One South, it might be a lot more difficult to make that safe to do it in the right-of-way. Yeah, exactly. So, so like Main Street or, you know.
Inside of their parking area.
Oh, it's on private property. It's a different story, right? Yeah.
It is, and there was some issues that come up and I just want to make sure that some of those issues don't. And I think we're making steps in the right direction and I applaud the council for doing that. I just, you know, because I, it's, uh, it's exciting times and, uh, you know, maybe, you know, to look outside the box and do business.
Yeah, yeah. Counselor Regan, you want to say something?
I, I think we can actually be tackling both of the dynamics that are on the table here in front of us, which is that we want to have a process that makes sense and that treats everybody fairly and that is, um, forward-thinking and responsive to the business needs. And we can be, uh, executing on things that work, that everybody's in favor of, that there was nobody in opposition to. I met with Phil Wagner at DeRozier's last night and asked him about this exact thing. And he said, love it. And so did everybody else around me. Let's do more of them. And that's what he heard in his communications with other business owners on Main Street. So I'm, I, I think we can, uh, go forward with the parklet, uh, at its location, the same place that it was last year, and continue to develop some process for other business owners to come forward. Keep the bar low, uh, focus on innovative and, and changing things and keep some energy going. Um, and, and not get, um, and not get bogged down in how it fits into or not fits into our, our land use zoning ordinance.
Yep. Yeah, I, for me, I, I echo that and I wouldn't overdo the process. I would say if staff recommends it to us and the adjacent business owner is supportive of it, um, it's up to the council to approve it or not approve it because it's town property that we'd be allowing them to use. So, um, you know.
The only.
With all, with all due deference to the leadership, um, we're, we're talking about the, uh, temporary approvals pending the process we end up going through to determine what to do with Main Street under the Principal Group recommendations.
The Main Street part of the vision, yeah, sure. That, that's years away before anything's constructed.
Maybe.
On Main Street.
Who knows? We haven't, we haven't gotten there yet, have we? I mean, I, I'm still hopeful that we're not. Maybe you know again more.
No, I'm, I'm looking at Mallett Drive, which was way further along and that's still a year or two out and Main Street, we still haven't begun to design yet, so.
But it's still only seasonal, right? I mean, they're not going to be up when we're plowing the street, so.
Right.
Like we, you know, it.
Yep. So this will be back before us again next spring until we just pass an ordinance that says you can do this, we'll have to approve it every year.
And I think, I don't even think you need to put it in ordinance because you're granting somebody the use of public property.
Right.
We're repurposing a public space and the town's saying, yep, it's the people in charge of the town. We're fine with it. So until that changes, until there's either a, a public outcry that it's a bad idea or you all think it's a bad idea, or the businesses think it's a bad idea. Or Main Street is altered by a design process that involves a lot of the ideas that came from Principal Group, a lot of our Complete Street Committee principals. Um, to a point where this doesn't fit on Main Street anymore. None of these fit on Main Street and I think the design process would take into account, hey, look, we've had this eight-by-forty stretch where there's been seating for the past five years or three years that are, that's really worked. Let's make sure something like that gets designed into the actual end product here. I think that that, I, I know it wasn't explicitly shown by the Principal Group plan, but it's contemplated that things like that, that those type of activities would exist on the street along with, you know.
Absolutely.
Traversable curbs and more tree plantings and things like that, so.
Go ahead.
If we put this, I'd like to bring this up next year earlier so we can get it out there when it's ready to go. Now is the perfect time.
Good idea. Yep. Because I think he, they probably would have liked to have had this up a month ago. Yep. Um, so everybody in favor of, of two things, right? One is putting the same parklet back up in the same location. And then secondly, allowing other potential parklets to be brought forward to staff with council approval.
Yes.
Yep. Yep, yep. Uh, I got three, four yups, including me. I got a, a thumbs up from Mr. Daniele, so we got at least five and a couple on the fence, but we got a majority, so I think you got what you need. Anybody violently opposed, or anybody opposed? All right. Not quite a vote, but.
Anybody violently opposed in addition to being opposed?
At least five people in support, was that what?
I guess five minutes wasn't an accurate assumption.
It never is. It never is. I thought you would have known that by now.
No, it's always the five-minute ones that take 20 and thirty, forty-minute ones take two.
So this next one should only take two because we've got a 30-minute item coming up. And Counselor Lawrence, I think you'll, you'll be the determining factor here. So, uh, the next item is our, our short-term rental registration. I didn't mean it to be harsh. I just meant that I know he's got concerns. Um, short-term rental registration ordinance review. So we passed this about a year ago. It's been in effect. I think we have a memo from the town clerk uh, with the details, uh, began July 1st of 2021. And the registration year ended March 1st of 2022. We had 53 short-term rentals that were registered for that period. Six were not renewed. Eleven new ones registered for this year. Four renewals, uh, were late and paid a late fee of $200. So when we passed it, we said we would revisit it after a year and, uh, see what we thought. So it's been about a year when we're revisiting it to see what we think. So I've got thoughts, but I'll open it up to the council to see what you guys think. Counselor Fournier?
Uh, we had a gentleman here a couple of meetings ago that had a concern about the late fee. So I guess my question is, um, is it important that we have a drop date? Is my first question, do we need that? Or could people want, could they register anytime throughout the year and do we need a late fee?
When we were drafting it, one of the concerns I know we had was if we don't institute a late fee, then I'm not going to register until somebody catches me and then when somebody catches me, I'll register then because it costs the same amount of money. So why, why bother doing it if there's no penalty for doing it late?
Right.
Okay. I, I, the late, I agree with you. I don't think it needs to be there because it just adds another cost to business. I, I personally think that this whole ordinance can be down to three lines like they have in Fallon. Register with the name of the owner so we can call the owner. And if you want, and, and then for safety, you have a fire extinguisher in the kitchen. Because all the rest of it is more of what we already have in our ordinances. How many of these were violated? I mean, it was such a big problem that we had to write this whole thing. How, how many other parts of this, other than the late fee, were actually a problem?
I'll continue to use the same dramatic effect I used before. Zero, counselor. I do, I think we should point out that I don't think, Chris, I don't think you communicated this, correct me if I'm wrong, but there are a few, I think seven is the number, right, that, that got hung up that could not be approved because they were not, there were issues on the property that were not
Related to the.
Not related to short-term rentals, but for example, somebody submitted one and it turns out that they actually met the threshold, not for a short-term rental, but for a hotel or, or, or an inn or a B and B that they had been operating for years and, and planning and code staff was like, oh, you technically need site plan review to have so many X number of rooms. That's an example of something that was never contemplated in this ordinance, but when you apply, you know, you can't run an inn or a B and B in that zone, so it gets hung up and they have to make a decision whether they want to cut the number of rooms or apply for variance or things like that. There were situations like that. Like dwellings, um, in structures that were never permitted or were never constructed that were found through this process that we didn't go looking for, but that just kind of jumped off the page to not, so, so somebody didn't meet the approval criteria in the ordinance, but it wasn't because of an Airbnb, uh, a short-term rental violation. The short-term rentals have, uh, have generated zero, zero complaints about registered rentals that were then found to be true that anybody took any action about.
Okay, so I guess the question, so what, there's nothing in the ordinance that anyone violated. So this huge problem that we had that we wrote the ordinance.
I think there may be, I think there may be some people that, I also want to be very clear. There may be some people, a small number, that didn't register. Chris found that there were about 70-ish that were listed for rental and we've only got 50-ish, 60-ish, depending on the time, uh, registered rentals. So there may be some unregistered rentals out there in Freeport. That's a violation of the ordinance, but the ones that are registered that have been approved, zero violations of the terms of the ordinance by those approved.
Right. So I think, what I think is that it's not needed because we didn't have any, any problems. I do agree that we should have it, have people register so we know where they are. We know who they are. Um, and who owns the property. So if there, if there is a, if there is a problem, we know who to call and who to find. Because it becomes a very onerous thing. Um, the one that was, it could be a bed and breakfast. I don't know how, oh, sorry. I didn't hit those.
How do we determine that it should have been, so we said that this one property you talked about had was big enough to be a bed and breakfast or they were running it as a bed and breakfast?
Yes.
It's got a number of bedrooms.
Yeah, it, it actually, I think, I think it was an inn. I could be wrong on that, but yeah, once it gets above a certain, a B and B is three rooms or fewer. When you're more than that, it's actually a separate land use under our zoning ordinance.
Okay, you mean if it, so it wasn't separate?
They were running it as a home occupation with no site plan approval. It tripped your hotel, your inn essentially.
Okay, but that was something totally different and.
That would have been an issue regardless of whether the short-term rental is, we never would have seen it because it's never, a few rooms being rented doesn't get to the level that we're, you know, unless there's a complaint or a problem, we don't become aware of it. But when someone puts the application in front of you and lists the number of rooms that are in there, then it's in front of you and you have to say, nope, that's not.
So if I, was it number of rooms or is it number of families that can rent the rooms?
It's the, the, what you qualify for, uh, under the land use, under our zoning ordinance, land use regulations is based on the number of rooms. I, there, I'm not.
So if I have a 10-room house, I bought a 10-room house in Freeport.
Yep.
And I wanted to put it out on Airbnb. It can't be an Airbnb because it's got 10 bedrooms?
You can use Airbnb to list it, but you're an inn.
Even though I'm not there, it's just a rented house. It was my, my family house and I'm renting it out as an Airbnb.
Are you renting them individually or just one location?
One family, you know, or.
Oh, no, no, that's.
Or like.
That would be a short.
Yeah, that's not a problem. If it's rented by, it's, if it's rented by the full house, if you break up rooms and rent them separately, that's when they become a separate use.
That's what I was asking. So it becomes a multifamily property at that point. Instead of, I'm renting it and I've got four families that are coming because they're all relatives and they're, they wanted to rent the house, but it's all, I'm not splitting it up.
Renting it to one person, we don't want to, we don't want to know how you're splitting it out. We don't care.
Okay. So they were splitting it. So that's not even, okay. That wasn't even a short term.
And that's not just, that's not just the town. That's also state.
Right. And that's, that's what I was trying to get to.
Hotels and fire codes as well.
They were splitting it up, so it became an inn. Okay.
Yeah, it wasn't the, it wasn't a giant house that had too many rooms in it. It was.
It was the way they were renting it out.
It was being rented rooms one through five, different people every night, like an inn would have, Airbnb. Yep.
Okay.
Counselor Fournier?
This is a very detailed document, obviously. So in the spirit of us trying to simplify and, and making our ordinance better, are, are there areas we can maybe uh, cut back? We, we certainly need the owner's contact information for public safety official analysis and whatever, but um, you know, maybe the parking, whatever. I'm wondering if there's a way we could make this a simpler document possibly uh, since we have had no issues with that, um, to, yep. It, it's very intense.
It is, and it, this year was 50, what, 55 properties and when we started doing this, I heard numbers being about the 300 we had at one point. Then I think last year or when, before we put it, was 150 we have in town. And now it's only 55, so.
The, on the numbers, 300 is the cap. So we've said we'll authorize up to 300 registrations before we need to get back involved and decide if we want more. I think at one point we thought there were, I'll say give or take 150. I saw 120, I saw 170.
Thirty to 150, yeah.
Yeah, and like the peak before COVID hit. So I could see it getting back up to that number. Um, and part of the justification for the 300 cap was what we saw going on in other coastal towns especially where there's a high sort of demand is a lot of the housing stock was an increasing share of the.
coastal towns especially, where there's a high sort of demand, is a lot of the housing stock was, an increasing share of the housing stock was getting eaten up, if you will, by short-term rentals, which was taking houses off the market, which is kind of what we don't want to see happen. So we didn't want to preclude people that have been doing this for generations from, continuing to do it. But we did want to say, if you're thinking of buying a house in Freeport just to put it on Airbnb, you might want to think twice before you, you do it. So I, I would even advocate for a lower cap, three hundred being almost ten percent of the houses in town.
Yeah.
Um, but that was, that's where the numbers are.
But I think most people that do that are buying a house in Freeport, so that they can live there at some point, and they can't afford to live there. I, I'm sure there are people that do it for business, but.
Council Bradley?
Yeah, Mike, I have a question. Peter, uh, there's fifty-three registered short-term rentals and no violations. Um, what inspection or what town effort was made to determine whether violations existed in those fifty-three units?
Complaints that, the numbers that I'm quoting are complaints that were investigated and determined to be violations of the ordinance.
So no person in the community complained, but no person in the town checked any of these properties to determine whether there were violations?
Only to the extent required by doing the background work. Yeah, there, there's no on the.
So we don't really know whether they have, uh, fire hydrants, or fire extinguishers, or kitchens, or anything. We just, we just know nobody complained about it.
Yep, and they, and they certified the things that they had to certify, um, but that was a decision that was made at the time.
I'm not worried about, I just, it puts that no violations in some perspective for me. Um, the other is that there's roughly twenty, uh, that we know about that aren't registered at all. Have we done anything about that?
We've been looking at it. Chris, do you want to give a little bit of a background on that, but?
So it's a little bit difficult with some of the platforms. What we found today was TripAdvisor, um, we were able to identify four parcels that we could actually narrow it down to an address, and then we cross-checked it, and they weren't registered. Airbnb is probably the most popular platform, and with that, they, we can't identify a specific parcel until something is booked. Then they'll give you the exact address. So us looking at it as possible bookies, we're not able to identify if that parcel on Airbnb is a registered one with us.
How do you come up with the number seventy-one? Currently, a cursory search of online rentals shows seventy-one listings in Freeport.
Because you can go on Airbnb and put in Freeport and see how many listings pop up.
So you know there's more than fifty-three, you just don't know where they are?
This afternoon, the number had ballooned up to about a hundred and twenty, because people, excuse me, are, you know, getting ready to post their summer listings, are, are turning them on, so.
But it's also, we do need to disclaimer that with, that that's the reported location. There are people that say their property is in Freeport that maybe aren't in Freeport that are using that name.
They're using Freeport as a draw, and they're in Powell, Durham, Brunswick, Yarmouth.
But there are definitely some. We, we've located a few, a handful, that, I think you saw a few that are not, that are, for sure, we were able to place them on the face of the earth, and they are not registered with us, within our geographical boundaries. Or at least it appears that way.
Through Airbnb, don't we have an option to communicate with the property host, and can we reach out to the ones that we don't have registrations for with a email basically saying, hey, it appears to be that you're registered, or that you're located in Freeport but aren't registered. Here's a copy of our ordinance. We suggest you register.
I'm, I'm not sure if there's a way for me to communicate with the, not the host, but.
I think that there is, but we'll have to confirm that. Uh, you've got Council Daniele.
Okay, Council Daniele.
But not everyone has to register, because they're allowed to do Airbnb for several days a year, right? Like, the ordinance allows an exemption for up to seven, fourteen. I don't remember what the, the number of nights was, but we have an exemption, so people could be still legally doing it on Airbnb and not have to register.
This is true. That's correct, yeah, yep. Good point. So that, that's why I suggested if we do communicate, it would be not a, you're in violation, but you know, it appears to be that maybe you forgot to register, and we think you should.
So the exemption is for dwelling units that are rented no more than twice per calendar year, and for less than a total of fourteen days in a calendar year. That's the exemption, so really, it's just fourteen days.
But that's also designed for people who, the number going up, like you're saying, this time of year, might be everybody's booked their summer vacations, and has a five thousand dollar a week house on the water, and is like, hey, I'm going to pay for my five thousand dollar trip to, uh, wherever I'm going by renting my house for a week to somebody, and they've got their money back. So I, I would expect that number, those short-term, really limited ones, that, yeah, the short, the, the limited duration ones that Council Daniele just spoke about, those are very much more likely to happen this time of year, because that's when the demand is the highest, and people are also vacating their homes for a short period of time.
And to address Daryl's, um, question about simplifying, I think people struggled with providing their property deeds, which everyone should have the deed when they purchase a home, but that seemed to be a big struggle for people. Providing insurance coverage that showed me that they had a million dollar per occurrence coverage, and that it was identified as a rental property. That's where people were getting frustrated, because they'd bring in their whole policy, you know, like, I just need to see that you meet the insurance coverages. We really, we kind of struggled with that. And lastly, the biggest thing that we struggled with was, um, people not being able to provide proof of, of what their legal number of bedrooms are. So you may have purchased a home that listed with three bedrooms, but the building permit was only permitted for two, so we're going to hold you to that permitted one. And, you know, unless you're able to provide the proper documentation to the code officer that it meets, you know, egress and, and like that, so.
Those are examples also of the, the seven now that exist that weren't able to be approved were like twenty-five or thirty, and I think a lot of people made adjustments, either got permits after the fact for like, you know, residences above garages that may have been added and never permitted, and they've been renting in short-term rentals for ten years, five years. A lot of those were resolved, because they're not things that weren't allowed, they're just things that nobody had followed the correct steps, and there was no record here at the town. So a lot, the ones that were resolved were great, because now those property owners are in compliance with what they have, that they were never in compliance with before. The seven outstanding ones that are still getting resolved, those are ones that are a little bit deeper, they're problem, they're either problems that we might have to do something about up here, or they might have to cease a use, or something like that. But, but the vast majority of those were resolved, and that falls into the things we never would have cared about, or never would have gone after, or looked at in detail, if there wasn't an ordinance that says you have to certify this number of bedrooms exist, or they have to provide you with some alternate documentation showing that that number of bedrooms exists.
And one is being resolved with a consent agenda and.
Which we know about up here, which is the Link property that they came in and talked with us. That's, that's an example of all those issues that we talked with, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Link about.
Mm-hmm.
Were, were raised through short-term rental regulation. So we found out about these potential issues, because he had to come in and document things that couldn't be documented to us.
Council Pillsbury?
So, two questions, ones are real quick. Um, how did we draft this in the first place?
Yeah, so it started out with a citizen recommendation, and then ordinance committee.
Just the language. Where did we get the, where, how did we cobble this together? Did we borrow from another municipality?
Uh, yeah.
I've got a bunch of sources.
It's as far as. Or just committee lawyers at.
So.
We used all the methods, I think. Not just borrowing. We borrowed, we lawyered it, we had committee members writing it, we had staff writing it, it was
Some citizen.
A little bit of a nightmare.
So, is it a reasonable next step? We've had a year, seems to be going, okay. There's movement to potentially simplify it even further. Should we, you know, have staff take a look at it, maybe have the attorney look at it, and see if there are things that we can remove, rather than us sitting up here and debating, you know, let's pull this out, let's, what, why do we need that? What's, I mean, we don't, we're not experts on this, we don't need to get ourselves in trouble by changing something that we shouldn't change. I mean, is that a next step to come back with a recommendation to say, if you want to simplify it, here are some options?
Do you want to take that? You want me to take that?
Yeah, I mean, the only hesitation I have is that they were, each of these points were Council Bradley, do you want to weigh in? How painful the hashing of each of one of these points at the ordinance committee and at the, I mean, like, we, we, you were involved in it, Dan was involved in it, John was, it was everything that was in here was a subject of probably five hours of deliberation, every single one of those little points, so I would there's only a few, not all of you are still in the council from when it happened, but everybody had a reason that each one of these things needed to be in or needed to be gone, so I don't know if, I want to recommend any of them come out, unless you guys make the political decision that we shouldn't be doing, hey, it's not important to worry about parking anymore, because there were probably five or ten people in the audience that were concerned about parking the whole time. Go ahead, Ed.
So, when this came up, it was a town-wide furor about short-term rentals, you know, and all of these were, that you see now as just advisory, were actually ordinance violations. And what it boiled down to at the end was that we agreed, we just needed a registration ordinance. And, and that's what this is, is, and you can go through the whole thing and find, with a few exceptions, that everything in here is really covered somewhere else in our, our ordinance. So, you know, I think it's fair, after a year, to say, well, now we've recognized that. I, I'm a little uncomfortable about there being twenty or thirty people who haven't registered, who are on, online renting, short-term, and I think we ought to look at that, but I think if we, if we sent this back to ordinance with the idea that can we really make it a registration ordinance? You know, and, and what's necessary to give us that information, so that we have control if people do raise objections? This could be simplified to a page.
Yeah, Falmouth ordinance is five pages, ours is six. A lot of what's in here is registration, what if it's late, what if you transfer it, um, basic life safety stuff, which everybody seemed to be in support of, smoke detectors, stuff like that. Um, and then there's some other stuff too, like noise and parking and all that. So I, personally, I wouldn't want to send it back to ordinance without directive and discussion up here saying, hey, we don't think parking should be in there, ordinance figure out how to get rid of it.
That requires a pretty elaborate discussion up here for a couple hours.
So what I was going to suggest was if somebody has something they want to remove, adjust, um, to suggest it here, instead of saying, make it cleaner, make it shorter, but if somebody says, here's something I don't think needs to be in there, we could have a short discussion, and if there's enough consensus, we could send it to ordinance, but if there's not consensus, then sending it to ordinance is a waste of time.
I don't think it's a waste of time. I think you could send it with a direction to the ordinance committee, whoever that still is, to say, look, we want to make this a, clearly a registration statute. And that's what we want. If we don't, if we want all the other things, that's fine, I'm not saying don't, but you could say that to ordinance, and ordinance could clean this up, so it's a registration statute pretty easily. I'd also like to suggest that we've got another, um, matter, substantive matter, sort of like this looming, with the, the moorings. And, you know, you're going to find yourselves in, with an ordinance like this, or more complicated, if you really want more than registration. But if we did do a registration here, it'd be a good, um, precedent for dealing with moorings outside the harbor as a registration matter, as I think the harbor master really wants.
So, procedure-wise, the mooring thing is going to be discussed at length in coastal waters. It's effectively the, the role that the ordinance committee played for this. Coastal waters are going to be playing for moorings, or they're going to discuss and get consensus before anything comes back here, so we don't have any.
I went to that meeting, so that's a, that's a great hope.
I, I would like for them to get as far as they can with it before we try and do it up here. Um, but I mean, it's a fair question to say, is there consensus here to send this to ordinance to say, simplify it as much as possible into a registration ordinance, because I, personally, I, I don't support that view, because like Peter said, everything that's in here, I think, is in here for a reason. If anybody has questions on any of the individual paragraphs, or, or, or pieces of it, I'm happy to talk about why I think it should be in there. Um, so.
Yeah, I do. I mean, if we want to talk about it. I don't know why we require them to have insurance. They should have insurance, but why is the state saying you have to have insurance? That, that is their responsibility to have it, that is for them. And I've heard, well, it's to protect the homeowner. Well, if they don't want to be protected, why are we forcing that? Well, to protect the, the occupants, or the people that are coming in. Well, they should be looking at those kind of things if they're really worried about that. So that's one of them. We have, um, we have the trash disposal, we already have something for that, so I don't know why we're reiterating it. Uh, I, uh, the noise complaints, I mean, we have a noise ordinance that should take care of that. Uh, I think the fee, the hundred dollar fee, fine, that's to cover next time, but the two hundred dollar, uh, late fee, I, I don't, I don't get that, only because we want people to register, so if they forget, and all of a sudden, oh, yeah, I got to register, now we're charging them two hundred bucks. You know what? Maybe I'll just wait till they come and ask me for it. You know, I, so I, I don't, I, I don't understand that. Um, and those are a couple of things that I think we should get, get rid of.
Council Fournier?
The, the other one, I think it's very difficult. We look at occupantly, occupancy limits. Uh, it says the guests are limited, two guests per. Now, there's bedrooms that are totally different. I, I use Airbnb, I've been in some houses that had six, you know, sleeping quarters in one bedroom, but I've been in some that only have one. I, and, and I think those are the type of things, you know, we're looking at. Parking, um, I'm not sure if we do have another ordinance in that. I had heard issues of people concerned with parking, so I, if we don't have another place to back that up. Evacuation plans, how are we going to enforce that? That, to, when I go to a place and rent, I'm going to find out my, where my windows are, and I'm going to find out where my door is, and my family's going to know. That's up to the person's response. We don't have that responsibility, you know, it's very, so those are examples of some. Thank you.
Council, uh, Egan, and then Council Daniele.
Part of, I think, what we're wrestling with is that the, the, um, business dynamic here is, is consumer to private property owner, and and so there, we could have, and we had last year and the year before, extensive debate on whether renting short-term, uh, or letting out short-term rentals, um, directly to consumers is a business or not. And, uh, if it's a business, then there's all kinds of precedent of protecting the public, and the town having all kinds of insurance requirements and rules about what you may or may not do with your business. And if we, um, consider that, that short-term rentals are not a business, then, um, what do we tell the property owner who bought a house in a residential area, and the short-term rental next door is letting out to, you know, the Penn State football team this weekend, and there's all kinds of uh, things going on, that moment the police show up, there happens to be no noise, but there's lots of, and I'm picking on Penn State arbitrarily. Anybody, whatever. So the, the, the activity is that there is a business activity going on in a residential neighborhood. And that zoning, that's why you have zoning, is to define uses and have, uh, allowable uses and adjacent uses described, pretty well regulated by our land use ordinance and by our project review board. So we, we, we can't really sort of have it both ways. We can't say, well, it is a business, uh, and, and there's commerce going on, and people are collecting, making a whole lot of money. Very few of these short-term rentals are charging even less than one hundred dollars for one night, so I don't think the fee is excessive. And then, but, but, but it's a private property owner making a business transaction with a private visitor. So it, it kind of, it's, it's new territory for what we're considering, whether or not we're regulating a business. We had all of those conversations extensively when we were putting this together. And, uh, as Council Bradley pointed out, ultimately, this was distilled as maybe an over, uh, simplification of the process, but it was, uh, through lots of, um, discussions and back and forth, it was determined that we were going to try a registration format. And in order to have a proper registration, we had to have some parameters about what was going to constitute a short-term rental, and whether or not the property was actually safe for people to go into. And it was interesting, at least in the first six months, we found that, uh, all of the challenges and problems with issuing the permits were not about whether or not there's activity going on that's bothering neighbors, or whether there's people parking in the street. It was, as Peter said earlier, almost all of the initial complaints and challenges were people had done things to their, to their buildings and never gotten a building permit, so the town didn't even recognize that there was an accessory apartment over the garage. And so, you know, when fire, fire goes to a building, and they get a quick rundown on what, what's at that location, and if it says it's a two-bedroom house, and they show up, and there's seven people over the garage, because there's an apartment there, that's not good. So that's part of the reason why we have that information in the registration, is for public safety. Um, and I don't believe this is any sort of control or, uh, regulate, regulate, regulation burden on the operation of the short-term rental, because all we're doing is asking them to tell us what you're doing. And the purpose of that was to collect data for a couple of years. We have one year of data. Really pleased to see that there's no complaints on the ones that, that were registered. Um, and, and as we pointed out, we have some work to do to get the unregistered users, uh, registered. And that's not a, in my opinion, that's not a, a penalty thing, or a punitive thing. It's like, hey, we have an ordinance, everybody else is playing by the rules, you have to play by the rules too. So I, I, I agree with, uh, with, uh, the chair that this is, uh, functioning well enough. We could probably have lots of conversation about a few paragraphs. We could probably have lots of conversation about a few paragraphs being trimmed down here to simplify, but I think it's performing the way we ultimately decided it should perform.
Well said, thank you. Counselor Daniele has his hand up on Zoom, see if we can hear you.
I agree, Mr. Egan, that was just a great summary. That's pretty much what I wanted to say. I think that we threaded the needle with the ordinance when we made it the first time. We heard from people who wanted it to be a lot stricter. We heard from people who didn't want anything, and this is what we came up with. To the point of why is it six pages? I think we heard from a business owner earlier that, hey, can you make a sheet that explains everything that I need to do to get something to happen? And so I think having the ordinance have a few things that are duplicated are nice because here's all the things you need to know about running a short term rental in Freeport. So I think it just makes it easier for everyone and I would prefer to leave it as is for a little longer.
Thank you, Jake. So I think, if I'm reading the room right here, that the consensus is to leave things as is. Not, you know, it's not unanimous consensus, but it seems to be that that's the consensus. And again, I'm certainly open to talking one on one with anybody who wants to, you know, dive into, why do we have a noise thing, why do we have a parking thing? You know, maybe not tonight because it seems like that might not be productive, but I'm happy to talk with, you know, one on one with folks about that. Unless anybody disagrees with that conclusion and feels that I've read the room wrong, I'm happy to go on to the next discussion and try and tell you.
All I got to do is take a straw vote.
We could take a straw vote, would you prefer to do that?
I'll tell you whether you were right about reading the room.
All in favor of keeping the ordinance as is for the moment? One, two, three, four.
I think you guys did a great job. I'm staying, I mean, you guys worked on this last year, you own it, and I'm happy to stay out of it. No, I'm just kidding.
I think it's needed, but those are my questions because I wasn't part of the problem.
Okay. All right, so I confirm my reading of the room. Thanks for that suggestion. And thanks for the discussion. And like I said, I do mean that I'm happy to chat with you guys individually about the items.
Counselor Kelly, is this to ask for the boards' help with something or is that not appropriate? Given that it's not public?
There's not a public hearing set tonight. So the consensus is so far, things are going to stay as is. But if you have comments, I'd encourage you to share them with anybody and/or everybody. You can email all the counselors at the same time and say, hey, this is what I think about it.
Okay, not tonight?
Because that's, not tonight, unfortunately. And sorry if I insinuated otherwise, I know we'd emailed about it and led you to believe that there might be that. But yeah, it's not a public item tonight.
There's public comment at every council meeting on something that's not on the agenda. So it doesn't help for tonight, but it is only two weeks away and you could make those comments.
But thanks for showing up, Kelly, I appreciate it. All right, I think we're at our last item of the evening, which Jessica is going to introduce or you're going to introduce?
She's listed on the agenda, so it's 100% going to be her. It's going to be her and I both are going to.
This is the grilling of the finance director and the town manager by the council. So Jessica can walk us through. I do want to, I mean, I think we should ask, right? Is the will of the council to step through? We've had councils approach this many different ways throughout the year. Is it the councils wish to step through the budget line by line? We've had those from many councils. Is the council's will to identify the items that you're already aware of that you want to discuss and have further discussions on and spend our time doing it that way? There's really, you know, or anywhere in the middle is really the spectrum here on how we can approach this.
Let me pose a question first, just process wise. Tonight is our workshop, the council's time to do what we want to do. There are two scheduled department head meetings for the public.
Those have happened.
Those have happened.
Those happened last week. To talk with the public. There is also, so and then there's a public hearing next week, is it next week?
June 7.
June 7.
Sorry, next meeting, I meant, not next week. So yes, so next meeting, there's a public hearing on the budget. There will be a budget workshop on that agenda as well unless you and John and the rest of the council direct us not have that on the agenda. So there'll be another workshop. Then the budget adoption happens, if it goes according to schedule, at the second meeting in June. So two meetings from now. There is time at that meeting. You can make changes, but we'd probably like to know about them ahead of time at least so Jessica can have what those numbers would do to any amendments because we print on the agenda what the actual adoption order would be. But if they've been identified ahead of time, she can run those numbers. It's just really hard to do it correctly the night of the meeting if it's the first time we're hearing about amendments.
And is there a public hearing at that second June meeting as well?
No, only on the 7th.
First, okay. So the public hearing is June 7.
Correct.
And we have basically tonight and another meeting. And then really, we should have our changes done by then.
Theoretically.
As there's a last minute change on the 15th.
And the printed agenda is not the requirement for the budget? The only requirement in the charter is that the council adopts the budget prior to the end of the fiscal year, which is June, end of June. So you do have the ability, if there are, say, for example, something comes up that needs more attention to call meetings or things like that prior to that. The deadline though is June 30. The charter states if a budget is not adopted by June 30, the proposed budget without amendment that is in front of you tonight gets adopted, is automatically adopted. So we have no chance of not having a budget because this becomes the budget unless you adopt something different between now and then.
Can I suggest that you start with a summary overview of the budget?
Sure.
And not dive in line by line. And what I can see happening after that is we may want to dig into categories.
I can give you, let me give you this.
Could I propose something else?
One.
Could, I mean, she's got a variance column. Could we have her give a little explanation for variances that might be above, like the inflationary cost increase? So that we're touching on things that, you know, are actively changing, you know, that there's no detail behind?
Yeah, do you want to do that category by category?
Well, I mean, I think she can probably run through it pretty quick.
Start at the top of that list of major impacts, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, start from there. Did that give you enough direction how to start anyway?
I think I caught up with half of it. I was giving Ed a copy of the budget. So I can take you through the major drivers. Sorry, I just want to get to the right page. So the major drivers that are new in the budget are the proposed, some proposed programming and positions that have been discussed prior at either committee level and/or council level. And that is the addition of a mental health professional within the police department. Do you want the values associated with it as well or you just want me to run through the categories?
I think the values would be helpful too.
Okay, sure. So that's about $100,000 with pay and benefits to add that position in. Sure.
Because we did hear from a community member today earlier, has there been any conversation about partnering with Durham and Pownell for part of that position?
At this stage, I'm not aware of that happening.
Is that something that would be reasonable?
I know Brunswick has been looking into a similar position. And there's been talk with whether or not it makes sense to partner with them. If they hire somebody, we hire somebody, maybe we can cross train, share, on-call, lights, things like that. My hunch is that we probably have more luck with that kind of arrangement with Brunswick. I don't know that Pownell and Durham would have the resources to support something like that. They share the cost of the school resource officer. So for everybody who's in the RSU, they do contribute to that resource, which does some of the things that would overlap with what a social worker would do.
They use the county, don't they, for?
Well, yeah, there's a couple different, they use two different counties. So Durham uses Andrusgoggin County.
Correct.
Pownell uses Cumberland County. And there are various times where either of those two communities may be contracting with state police as well for emergency coverage. I'm not sure what the current arrangement is in either, other than the first responders are Freeport PD for Freeport Fire and Ambulance is backup usually. Freeport PD is almost always first responder in the case of a life or death incident. We're almost always the closest unless there's a county, unless there's a sheriff's deputy that's within a closer range. We do not respond to non, you know, major incidents in those two towns from a police perspective. They go to the county. Whereas Chief Goodman points out, when he finds the truck flipped over on his road at 3:00 in the morning, where he lives in Durham on his way home from his overnight shift, and he calls Andrusgoggin County and it's still there at 11 o'clock in the morning when he leaves his house. So non-emergency situations do not get the, do not get a response from us, but anything that's life or death and that's goes out on the radio would get. So I think that plays into the, what we're looking for here. I mean, the, they don't have police services on their own. They contract police services. Is this something that we want to provide and ask them to contract with them? Go ahead, counselor, sorry.
I'm not sure if they would. I guess there may be grant opportunities. So I hope we research that and possibly apply for grants to help fund that position. And I like the idea, if we're going to go and utilize the RSU 5, so if we're going to make the position available possible, the RSU 5, maybe some sort of that funding, you know, 25, $30,000 possibly could come to help offset that. Because I imagine there'll probably be quite a bit of time that would have to be spent in the school system. And if the resources being completely, you know, funded initially from the town, maybe they could help share in that.
Yeah, my sense is the bulk of the time for this resource would be responding to sort of emergency, urgent, mental health crisis situations, drug overdose situations, things that, you know, maybe there's some overlap with what the school resource officer does, but I don't know that the bulk of the time would be spent in schools, I'm guessing otherwise.
That's what Daniele.
I think I heard earlier when Joyce was speaking, they also wanted to do follow up on, you know, post-traumatic stress and all of that. So that certainly could, you know, which I think is needed, I think it's a great idea.
Counselor Daniele.
Could we not hire a police officer that we have listed in order to fund this position instead of an additional spot for the police department?
Yes, please don't do that. I think that, I think that the minimum staffing level, or at least I'll speak on behalf of the police department, you could ask this question directly to the chief who could provide you with better information. The amount of time that we've actually been at our designated staffing level for the past five years has been remarkably slim just for the, because of the time to get somebody onboard versus the turnover rate. So if you're talking about a two-year onboarding process for a new hire or a six-month onboarding process for somebody who's experienced in the field, that means you have to have no turnovers for a six-month or a two-year period to not, to be at full capacity. It almost never happens. So that's reason number one. Reason number two is even at full capacity, there are still gaps. For example, when there are single officer coverage, which it's not the end of the world, but you don't have the, you know, you have the bare minimum for a 24-hour response for about eight hours of the day right now. So that doesn't mean that we're uncovered, but it does mean that there's not multiple people able to respond to something at 4:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning, unless we get help from a neighboring community on some nights. So those are, I mean, we wouldn't be able, we would get, we would go more in that direction. But yes, you could, one of the things could be to, by attrition, not hire a replacement and replace it with this position. In theory, it wouldn't get us ahead. It should keep us at the same level because if this person's doing 40 hours a week of calls that are otherwise police officer calls, that's taking, in theory, most of 40 hours a week away from the patrol officers. It's not one-to-one, but I think it will end up being pretty close. So it doesn't put us ahead, but it also, it would only put us a little behind once this gets off the ground, is probably my guess. I'd ask that question directly to the police chief though, if you want a better answer.
But it also kind of plays into vacations and people being off and all that. So we need to have coverage for all that, so I wouldn't be in favor of that move.
You would not be in favor?
You'd see a corresponding increase in your overtime and reserve level funding, you know, if that were to be the route that you go.
Right, but now you're just wearing everybody, but now you're wearing everybody out.
Exactly.
And that's not a good way to be either.
Yep, somebody brought up the grant item as well. And two ways of approaching it would be, one is include the position in the budget start, advertising for it July 1st while we pursue grants and hope that we get some grants. And if we get the grant, we can reallocate the money. Or we could say, let's pursue the grants first and not include the position in the budget. The consensus of that advisory committee was to say, we'd like to see this person soon, so let's put it in the budget, please. But that is another way to go on about it.
How's the department feel about it? Are they all for this or are they?
I think it started out as lukewarm, but the more we've discussed it and the more we've talked with other communities that have a program like this in place, there's a real value to it. And I think the department supports it. I think the real question is going to be after a year or two, has it helped? Only they can answer how much it's taken off their plate. All you have to do is just ask them, you know, for stories about doing things that aren't typically police officer duties. And they're, the number one thing that I hear is after somebody starts this job and they're in it for a year, it's like, wow, that's not, that's not the pop culture definition of a police officer. I'm a social counselor. I'm a, I'm a family assistance type person. You're spending sometimes all night at a family's house where they're having, you know, an individual with a mental health crisis or drug problems. That's not, that's not what they're, they're not trained for. I'm glad they do it, we're thankful. They're the only people that are doing it some nights in our town. But getting somebody who specifically deals with that with the backup of a police officer is really what's come to be accepted as a really good approach here.
Peter, I guess that's a question. One of my understandings about the value of this position was that it reduces significantly the numbers of potential violent interactions between people with guns and people with training to deal with mental health issues. Is that fair or is that part of our thinking here? Or is that just common culture?
No, I think, I think I agree with that, but what, who, it reduces the interaction between what groups again?
Well, what it does is it says, instead of having a policeman who's, you know, basic response is, you know, when things get out of control is to reach for his firearm because that's what he's trained to do and he's trying to protect himself and others around him. I'm not being critical of that, I know that's a response. But if you have this kind of person available to you, then when there are different modalities for dealing with those kinds of crises, which often avoid violent interactions with police and people in the community. So if we hear in Maine over the winter about the seven or eight interactions between the police department and people with mental health that were killed in lonely cabin situations in the woods because they came out with a rifle and the cop, excuse me, the police person had only one way to respond, was trained only one way to respond, we might be actively avoiding those kinds of tragic circumstances, both for the officer and for the person who was killed.
That's 100% why this is being proposed.
I'm 100% in support of it for that reason.
It's, and it's, there's twofold. One is taking, people respond differently to somebody not in a position of authority. So when somebody is under the influence or maybe just has a really bad relationship with authority or with police, somebody sitting there that's trying to help them with a badge and a gun on in their kitchen, trying to be like, listen, man, we want to help you. And your reaction is fight person with a badge or I don't trust that person, you're going to take it much differently than somebody sitting there with a police radio, no official attire, and saying, I'm here to help you, I'm a social worker. You're not getting arrested tonight unless you do something stupid, let's talk this through. That situation for that person resolves most cases without interaction. Now, I'm happy to say our police department is trained not to escalate situations and they do a really good job. We have those, we have those incidents that you described, Edward. It's made known to our police department, hey, there's somebody that's suicidal and they're going to go, you know, flash a gun in front of a police officer because they want to commit suicide by cop, that's the phrase, like they want to provoke an incident. And our police department knows how to deal with that and they don't confront the person. They make sure that they get them help, they try to find them a way. This would be the way to get that person help. To send, you know, once it's deemed to be safe that they're not a threat to somebody, say, hey, we want you to talk to this person, talk to them on the phone, you introduce them. Maybe they can get them the help they need as opposed- You introduce them. Maybe they can get them the help they need as opposed to somebody with the, with the position of authority that's going to be an automatic confrontation. So that's, that's a hundred percent why, you know, if we can reduce one incident, if we could avoid one incident in Freeport where there's some fatal interaction because somebody did something, it's worth this kind of money every single year in my book. So.
Is there anybody who wants to take this out of the budget?
No, but I, I have a funding that I would like to have checked out. Right now, our parking tickets go to the general fund, right?
We haven't had significant parking ticket revenue in three years. It's, we haven't had staffing and/or. For us in three years. I think if we look at the budgets, down to maybe 15,000 at this point and it was over, I think we were bringing in close to 75,000.
Correct.
So.
So that's telling me, maybe we need to hire someone up there to help for that because that used to be a significant revenue.
Yeah. When I, when I spoke during the budget meeting, that we've lost significant sources of revenue over time. That is one, definitely one of them.
Okay, so.
It's twofold. For two years, there was, not only did we not have the staffing to take care of it, there were not, there was not the traffic on the streets.
Not the visitors, right, exactly.
So the, the second point, if, if that revenue is not there, that, that's another issue. Then we can, I'm wondering if, if that person is able to come in and take some of the follow-up workload, is there some savings in overtime? In, in theory, that there may be some savings in the overtime police budget that could help. It's not going to fund the whole position, but maybe help fund some of that position. I guess the chief would have to tell us on that.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't bank on it. That would be great if that, if that happened. But they're not, this position won't be covering shifts that would otherwise be assigned to a officer.
I understand that, but this position is going to be in and doing follow-up on what some of the police officers are doing now that possibly may reduce the workflow. I, I'd like to have the chief research that. If there are some savings, if we can save 15, 20,000, 30,000 out of the, you know, overtime, if it's possible, that'd be great. And, you know, I think, you know, that's something we could research and, and, you know, as opposed to not filling another police. I'd rather see a reduction in overtime than not filling a vacant police position. I think that's a fair compromise.
Yep. All right. We ready to move on to the second item? So Jessica, you were going through major drivers and we got through one.
One, yeah. So the next item is a zoning administrator position that comes at a cost of about, projected cost of 115,000 for their pay and benefits. Do you want me to stop?
Yeah, just keep going. We'll stop you if they want to stop.
Okay. The third item that I have is a benefit-only impact of about 80,000. It's the conversion of two full-time equivalent positions from part-time wages into two full-time fire rescue supervisors. So there's no anticipated pay changes, but we would be moving part-time or per diem hours in pay into two full-time positions. So there would be benefit costs associated with them, but we would have savings on the per diem side in hours and time. And it would just be the benefits for those positions.
And we've heard clearly from the chief that that helps with retention and, and helps with retention and attraction of, of new candidates for those positions that we're offering full-time slots. So I'm strongly in favor of that.
Can I ask you a question, Peter? Back up to the administrative zoning. If I remember right, you said that there was enough revenue that was in the building permits to cover that?
Close.
Okay. So we'll just look at it down. I'd like to look at that down the road.
Yeah, I mean, the building revenue line was increased this year. We can, when we hit revenues, you can look at it.
Perfect. Okay, that's all.
Yeah, the building, the building fee revenue was increased 50,000.
From 2022?
From the 2022 budget, correct.
Which is probably up from 2021 is my guess as well.
A little bit, yeah. We, we've made incremental changes over the years. It's probably a higher increase, which is why it's in the chart. So.
It's an increase over budgeted levels, but it's not an increase over what we actually received this year. We're expecting it to go down slightly. So if we budgeted here, we receipted here this year and we're probably expecting, we're budgeting next year for it to be here. So we're expecting to make a little bit less in revenue that, that way than we did this year, but still an increase. Still more from over the past two years, yeah, or three years.
What's the dollar amount on the conversion of the fire rescue positions for benefits?
80,000.
Thank you.
Yep. And then there's the inclusion of a sustainability coordinator that is projected currently as a, as a part-time or a half-full-time position. And it, so there's no benefits associated with it. It would just be a $40,000 wage impact.
So with that, I mean, I know we had, we had talked at various times about having other positions, potentially part-time with somebody to go after grants, somebody to spearhead communications. I mean, is this an opportunity for us to say, there's, there's overlap in, in two of those roles? Because I feel like there is, I feel like there's money out there. Now is the time for us to actually go after it. And rather than try to nickel and dime it a bit and have a half-time person that's not benefit-eligible, that may or may not come in and out and be the most reliable, I'd rather take a look at what it would cost for a full-time person that's working on that issue and also trying to get us some grants.
So you're saying half sustainability, half grants?
I mean, or, or some combination of the two, 60, 40, 70, 30, whatever we think. But I, I feel like there's need there and there's money out there that's going to offset this. I mean, if they're halfway reliable and competent, they're going to bring in more than we pay them.
I struggle with this one honestly because I'd say 80% of the comments that I hear in support of the sustainability coordinator position is because there's grant money out there that we should be pursuing and why not hire somebody to do that? So is that a grant coordinator who happens to have a focus on sustainability? The other 20, 30% of the comments that I hear are, no, there's real sustainability projects that need to be led and we're not going to get the grant unless we can identify who's going to lead the project. So ideally, if we had all the money in the world, I would hire full-time for both. But I, I don't know. I floated the idea of can one person do both jobs, half and half? I've come to believe that I think the skillsets are different enough that I think that would be unlike, we'd be unlikely to find somebody who's that kind of unicorn in terms of the skills they have where they'd be good at both things. Cause there are people who build careers on, on writing grants and have offered to help us on a volunteer basis or maybe help us find someone who we can contract with to, to write grants on our behalf. So, so that's not off the table. Even if we don't hire a full-time grant person, we can still contract these grant writers to help us. But I, I don't know that we, that I found a way to combine those two positions that I felt comfortable with.
Dan, as you, as you thought about this, you know, it doesn't seem to me like we were in a startup grant world where we're just sort of wondering what grants could we get or the things that we're interested in. We're in a world that's populated by grants, if, if I'm seeing it correctly from the committees I'm involved. So we don't need one of these, you know, expert grant writers who goes out and goes through the Huskings and finds the, you know, the obscure grant that you never realized that you. All we need, at least immediately, is the guy who can go out and harvest what's, what seems to be in, in the general register, you know? And that, to me, so that takes away the, the concern about having, you know, a narrow focus on grant writing. You know, we need the guy who can put those, like Brett has for the sewer. He's, he's smart about that stuff. That a guy who's been involved in, in finance and in municipal situation, but I think he could put these two things together. And what's the harm in trying as opposed to, we're not going to fund both of them at full. I'm, I'm speaking for myself. It'd be hard to press to come up with that kind of money. So go after it both and see how it works out. If it doesn't work out, then you'll know and at the end of the year, you, you can adjust your, your sides.
Or, or what, I mean, along those same lines, what if it's someone that's more of the generalist for managing grant applications and keeps the boilerplate stuff together, can put together the primer? And if we need somebody with a specialized skillset for a really specific thing, we contract out. I mean, somebody that's, that's kind of just coordinating and keeping an eye on things and not letting opportunities pass us by. I mean, I think, I think there are different levels of engagement for a person like that. And maybe what we need is someone just to start and tell us what we need to do to go to the next level. I mean, I guess what I'm saying is each one of these positions, you know, sustainability coordinator, a grant writer, communications person, there is going to be so much work for them to do when they get in here. It's not like we're going to lack of things for them to do. And what we need is someone to come in and tell us where we should be focusing, how we should be doing it, what other resources we need. I mean, this is really a starting point in my mind.
Yeah, I would agree. I think we should go for a grant writer. I mean, that, that is, that can focus on all the grants, not just one type of grant. I think that's first. And then if you get a grant, you hire somebody else. But to find a coordinator to do, well, what is, I guess, what is the job of the sustainability coordinator? Well, it's such a, maybe it's word, it's sustainable. What's sustainable? I mean, that's.
Well, it's the Freeport-Can group. It's, it's the whole, the whole group of people in town that are worried about global warming, which you're not. And I'm, and I'm not criticizing. I'm just thinking it's a different emphasis. And they've come in and said, you know, we need somebody to put these programs together so that they make sense to all of us. And I, you know, I think that makes sense. But you may not, but that's, that's why it's there.
Well, I do agree. All right. So I know we're affecting our climate, but everything is still up in the air. Everything's done on a model. And the problem with models is that you have to, I know, I know, I just, I get it. I'm not. But to go down this road is where it's, well, I think if we had a grant writer, I'd feel much more comfortable if it was a grant writer versus a sustainability coordinator. Because I don't know what it does. I, I get keeping the, keeping the lead out of the air, keeping the mercury out of the air, keeping, keeping it clean is, is great. And that's what we should be doing, but it's just, I'm not there yet.
I know you're not.
Keep things moving. Council for New York.
I, I agree really with a grant writer position and, but also I think, you know, I, I think Matt hits, hits a point. Cause I think for us to be eligible for some of the grants, we may need that title of a sustainability coordinator there. So if those two could be shared, but you know, we also, people have got to realize we have invested with Cog for sustainability too, which I think is great because we're talking to multiple communities on what can be very effective. So we're taking some positive steps there. But I, I would be more in favor of a combination position with the grant being the emphasis writing on that with a secondary or, you know, responsibility down there that, you know, sustainability. But I, I think.
Yeah. Jessica, I don't know if you can answer this on the fly, but right now in the budget, I think you said there's a $40,000 halftime sustainability coordinator position. If we increase that to a full-time combined sustainability grant position, which, you know, I'll withhold my views on whether I think it's a good idea, that becomes a full-time position presumably with benefits. So that 40 would go to?
I would be, I would hedge it would be at least 100,000.
So it'd be adding another 60,000 to make it full-time.
That might be a little shallow.
What's that?
110 might be a better number.
Yeah, I was going based off of, you know, when we were looking at like the communications position, we were thinking around 100. So you're right, it could be a little light, but at, at a minimum, I would say that it's that.
100 to 120.
Yeah. Cause I think a grant person is going to be more difficult, more senior, more specialized sustainability coordinator. It's probably going to be a lot more applicants.
I agree. I think there's a, there's a few positions that we're having a lot of trouble with filling. One is the zoning administrator because we're looking for a very specific thing. We've got a lot of positions that are difficult to fill. We've been informed that the social worker, clinical social worker or clinical counselor working in the police department is not going to be a difficult hire because there's a line of people that want to do that work because it's in vogue right now. It's in vogue in terms of you want to make a change in the world, but maybe you don't want to be a police officer, but you can do all the good things to help society that a police officer does without being one. There's a list of people that want to do it. I think sustainability coordinator is another position or sustainability position in municipal government where there's a lot of people that want to do it. Grant writer is going to be a tough one to fill. I'm not saying that to try to convince you not to do it. I think it's, it's been identified. Everything you're saying, there's a good reason for it, but it's might be one of those ones that sits for six months until we find somebody that knows, that's competent that we're comfortable with. So just throwing that out there for discussion. Yeah.
I mean, those are all great points. I guess a counter to, I mean, the way I would look at it is I see a gap in what we've put down on paper and what we actually need. And I think I'm in favor of filling that gap so that we get the activities taken care of, so we get somebody that can do sustainability. So we get somebody that can do grant writing. So we get somebody that can do communications. So whether or not that's three halftime positions, whether or not it's some other combination, I'm, I'm open to ideas, but I would like to see those as resources for our town because I think that they will have big payoffs for us.
I do want to say that some of those functions are going to help other departments as well because sustainability right now is about 10 to 20 hours a week of planning department staff. So, you know, if you, let's just say you had a full-time person, you pick up 40 there in terms of cost, but you also probably get 20 hours of productivity out of planning staff that currently works with the sustainability committee on sustainability items and things like that. So you're not just, we're not just dedicating all that time. We're actually going to pick up some time when we're freeing up other staff in departments where we really need the help. So.
Would that person report to our planner if we hired a sustainability coordinator?
It could. That would, that's an area where they're usually located in municipalities. I don't think we've, I don't think we've decided that a hundred percent, but that's a probably seven out of 10 likelihood that that's where it would land. Do you feel differently about that?
I'm having a hard time hearing, but yeah, I, I think I'm in agreement with what I was.
Question is, would it, would it be located in the planning department? I said that's usually, they usually fall under the planning or community development structure. Yes.
What kind of, just from my knowledge, what kind of things are, when you say they're doing sustainability issues, what, what are they doing? I mean, I don't know. Is it, is it something the state that has said, hey, we need to do this? Or is it something that's a federal regulation that we're following or is it something different?
There's really two different directions that they usually work in. One is for municipal operations, right? And that's like, that's identifying things, efficiencies, working on projects locally. That's everything. Our sustainability advisory committee has a list of things that they want to get done at the municipal locate, at the municipal level, you know, town facilities, things like that. That's part of it. The other part focuses of the job usually focuses on the community as a whole and how do they promote policies that let the market or let the public, you know, the general public accomplish goals. So there's a very limited amount that the town can do. You know, we put in electric charging stations. They're there now because nobody else wants to do it because it's a loss leader. So the town has to, municipalities have to do it in some cases, things like that. And then there's the whole, how do you do something that helps other people in the market address climate change? So like an example of that was our former town planner did this solarized project where they bund, where she bundled, you know, got a, we had a bidder that was designated by the town as like the installer and they gave a special rate to everyone. If 30 people in Freeport signed up for this program, they gave a discount cut rate to install solar panels on your house. We didn't spend a dime on that other than staff time, but that's something that maybe influenced the market, you know, got, you know, got a policy out there that got something accomplished. So that's one direction, projects like that where they can go, where they try to influence, you know, the general town. And the other one is dealing specifically with our operations, which is what's traditionally thought of, you know, like our fleet of vehicles, our electric use, our, you know, building efficiencies, things like that. So it does all that.
Okay. So when the police chief came to us and said he needed a, a car, we asked him to go, oh, when the police chief came and said he needed a car and we told him to go look at these two things, is that something the sustainability coordinator does or is that something that the police chief did?
They would have, somebody like that would have had a list of every town vehicle and identified, you know, in advance the five most likely that would work for, you know, hybridized or electric vehicles as opposed to gas vehicles. And they'd make the recommendation to us for the bidding process. And then they would go as far as, you know, getting the. And then they would go as far as, you know, getting the grant to get an electric car to try out, to do a solar, you know, charger installation to go along with it, like big bundled projects, that's usually what they work on.
Okay.
At least, that's how I've seen it done, Sergeant.
Yeah. But you, what you said today is that 20% of their time is taken up doing what? Those kind of things? I mean, is that what they're doing? Or?
You mean the, the current planning staff?
The current, I'm not, I was wondering what was, what the current staff is doing for, that we need to hire a position for, because this is some, but it seems like we're putting all this on ourselves. There isn't anything out there that says, the state says you got to do this, the federal government says you got to do this, we're doing it ourselves.
That is.
That's my observation, so.
Well, a significant chunk of the public is asking us to do it too.
But I think that's an accurate statement. It is something we're taking on that's voluntary.
Yep.
Right.
So it wouldn't be replacing, you know, mandatory functions that have to be done by somebody else, it's essentially taking on additional work. Currently, staff is doing some of that, but it's on a limited basis. And by limited, I mean, you know, works, committee meetings for three hours a week, you know, deals with them, does follow-up for them. Hey, we need you to investigate how this is done somewhere else. She might do some phone calls to, you know, neighboring municipalities, and boom, you're at five to seven hours, you know, you've done a workday on.
I know how time, time creeps, and there's jobs, scope creep and all that, so.
So is there support for adding a halftime grant coordinator in addition to the sustainability coordinator, presumably at another, say, $40,000, $50,000? Jed?
Yes.
Yes? Oh, you're raising your hand as a yes?
Yeah.
Also, was it a yes or, okay.
I.
Offense?
One or the other, but not.
One or the other, but not both?
Yeah.
I'm leaning heavier towards grants.
Both of you guys would prioritize grants over sustainability, and is Jake still around? Do you have a preference?
I'd combine and get the full-time position.
You combine them into one full-time? You think we can find somebody with the right skills to do both?
Council Danielle, how long's your hand been up? You've been off the screen, I'm sorry.
It's okay, just a little while. Sorry if I seem distracted.
You've had, you've had.
As a sustainability coordinator, I think that we have a grant process in place with FEDC, and we're talking about using that to funnel grants anyway. So having advocates to bring to the group that's going to be writing our grants will be important. The point I wanted to make a little while ago, and sorry to jump around a little bit, was just that our municipal budget is projected to go up 10% because of this. And that makes the total levy increase 4.25%. And while I love a lot of these things, I'm wondering if we need to have a tough conversation, like, do we have the political will to say 10% is a good number this year?
Yeah.
And I think that's the bigger question that we need to be talking about before we go into these nitty-gritties, oh, I really want this, I really want that, I want it all. That would be wonderful. But I am uncomfortable at 10% when in the past we worked so hard to stay at zero or, you know, a minimal increase.
Yeah, good points. And not to jump around too much, but Jessica, can I ask you a question? If we funded some of the increases in the budget, using either ARPA money or more of our general fund undesignated balance than we currently plan to, would that bring down our municipal budget increase number and the tax levy increase number?
It would be a one-time decrease to the, yes. But you would see a corresponding increase the next year when those get back to their true funding level.
Except if we're funding one-time expenses.
Unless it's a one-time expense, right. If you're talking about positions, is where I was kind of leaning.
Talking about positions.
Yes. You know, if you're, if you're using either the use of fund balance or ARPA funds to supplement, I'll use the phrase, general governmental services, which can be anything within our budget, right? And it's not something that is above and beyond what's currently budgeted, meaning if you want to use it to do paving, right, that's $100,000 impact this year, and you have no intention of putting the paving or keeping paving at the proposed $350,000 level, and you anticipate going back down to the $250,000 level after using ARPA funds this year to fund it, then you would have a zero budget impact, right? But if the proposed budget of increasing it to 350,000 is kept, and you only have ARPA funds one year to use it, right, the next year at 350,000, you're going to have that $100,000 impact to the budget.
I would also add, that's a little bit, not all, but a little bit of how we got to 10% levy increase that Council Danielle just pointed out, is using a lot of sources of revenue and deferring expenses and adding things into the budget that were asked for before in the last two years.
In the context of trying to keep the budget flat. I guess my point is, if we, there are a couple of items proposed in, in the summary that appear to me to at least be one-time expenses. The, the paving is one of them, and the prep for the comp plan contract, which doesn't happen every year, is another one. And I don't recall, and I, I know we talked about this, but the grant match, I don't know how much that is a one-time expense.
All one-time.
This is the first time it's in the operating budget, so, you know, it depends on how aggressive we end up getting and being with the grant.
Those, those three items add up to $200,000. If we were to use a portion of the ARPA award, which we have not designated yet, for instance, $200,000 of that, to cover those three items, that would come out of the municipal operating budget and reduce the 465 by $200,000.
That would be correct.
I would also caution the, include, I would caution including paving in there, because I think that paving is, well, I mean, I hate to predict what oil's going to do, because I'll be wrong in a bad way, you know, but I don't think it's going down.
I, I would, I, I'm in agreement with that statement, other than to say, if your intent is only to defer, I, my recommendation would not be to use ARPA funds for that, if you intend to go revert back to the 250, because you're, you're really not going to be able to sustain your paving at 250, given the current economic climate.
Right. But we also have substantial capital reserves across all nine categories of our capital budget, and paving clearly fits into our capital budget. So I think there's other ways that we could nip and tuck to find that $100,000 increment as opposed to putting it into.
Yep, so this is, this is your smaller, I, I would, I'm just trying to think through all the definitions of it, right? But this is, we do have paving within the capital budget, which is for the reconstruction and rebuilding of the roads. This is more your patching and overlaying and, and like.
Yeah.
Band-aid work is kind of how I would look at that. So that may or may not.
This is, this is overlays, the other stuff is getting deep in capital, the capital stuff is getting deep into the bones of the road, something that might be a 20-year project. This is something that might be a five-year wearing course.
You're saying usually we spend $250,000 a year on this band-aid paving, and you're suggesting we add 100 and spend $350,000 a year?
Usually, historically, this has been at $450,000. A few, at the start, I think just before the pandemic, maybe a couple, maybe two years before, I'm going to say the 2019 budget, I believe we reduced it by $200,000 to $250,000 in order to help keep the mill rate flat. Because we had staffing concerns at that time, building, you know, the materials that were being used were at a lower rate. So they couldn't feasibly, at that time, get all the projects that needed to be done, done with the staffing that they had. So it was in agreement that we can reduce it with the understanding that at some point it's going to have to go back up. And now that they're fully staffed, in conjunction with prices being astronomically higher, you know, that they're, what they would have gotten done for projects at that $450,000 level with a full staff is now only going to get them what would be done in a $250,000 level with full staff. Does that make sense?
It does. And you're proposing we increase it to 350 in the budget?
Yeah.
Okay.
Knowing that, you know, this year's increase is to 350, the full intentions in future budgets is to work it towards that 450 again.
But, but the other two items that Counselor you can point it out, the ordinance work and the grant matches are more one-time things that if we use ARPA money for.
I would not be in disagreement with that statement.
And, and others.
I guess the best we're going to get out of her, isn't it? I'm not going to disagree, all right?
I, I'll, I'll do better.
My hesitation would be, if the expectation is that we continually apply for grants, that's not going to be a one-time per, hit to the budget, right? If your expectation is that staff annually and continually pursue grants actively, and you're bringing a position in to do so.
Yeah.
This is going to become a budget line item, because you almost always have to have grant matches.
I agree, but that's, that's something that we, and we continually work on our budget. I'm not trying to be argumentative, but that we're, we continually work on ways to rearrange things to make it fit with whatever we have in that year.
Correct.
We're making, or at least I think we're making largely some considerations about staffing positions, which is, in my six years, pretty new, to be adding this many FTEs to the budget. So I'm trying to balance that. Maybe we do most or some, but not all. But I'm trying to balance that additional FTE, which I very much clearly understand is now going to set the budget from here to here, because you, once you hire people, they're in.
Correct.
So I'm trying to find a way to soften that giant step that we're taking. And as Counselor Danielle pointed out, to get the 10% down to a single-digit, a lower single-digit.
And I'm not in disagreement with that, with that statement. I just, I don't want to mislead or have someone believe that those are true one-time.
Yep.
Projects, because they may not be at that. I, I'm more inclined to think the ordinance work definitely is, but it's at council discretion, really, if the grant one will be. And, and I apologize if it, if it is sounding argumentative, because I'm not trying, I just, I just want, I don't want someone to misconstrue my thought of.
You're doing your job very well.
Yeah. Jar?
I, I think Jake hit the nail on the head. We could be here all night discussing positions, we're going to take money here or whatever. I'm wondering if we should have a discussion of, are we comfortable with a 3%? Are we comfortable with a 4%? If we could have some sort of direction that maybe we're comfortable to look at, and then direct the staff to come back and look at revenues, look at where we're going to go, and come back with some of these money, and then we can discuss it further. Doing budgets, that was always easier for me as a department head, when that was taken as opposed to having where we're going to go.
Well, what I was going to propose is, there's a lot of ideas flying around, and if we could categorize them, because there's probably some revenue shifting or things like that, like, do we pay for this out of ARPA funds or not? And expense items as well, if we list them all out, and that gives us a bit of a menu that we can choose from at our next meeting, saying, hey, I would be in support of this expense if we could fund this out of another source. Or if we want to use more of our fund balance to pay down, you know, the tax levy, then I would be in support of this position. As opposed to trying to do things in isolation, saying, do you support this position or not? Well, I don't know, it depends on the other things. So maybe we list them all out. And I don't know if you have a list of that, or if you want me to keep a list of that, or if you keep a list of that, but if, if you are tracking the things we're throwing at you, that'd be great.
Yeah, I've been writing, making notes, trying to decipher what the questions truly are, just so that we can have answers for the next meeting.
Okay. Does that give us enough to go on? So we're not actually going to confirm, yes, we want this in there tonight, but we confirm ideas and what we want to see for next time.
Can you give a little guidance on how much ARPA we're funding, we're talking about offsetting one-time expenses in the budget? Because I can be much more effective about that than Jessica can, because she'll have a lot of, I can do it with a lot less heartburn than she can, I think is the polite way to say it.
We have roughly 760-something that we haven't designated, and Counsel Pilsbury and I had a brief conversation about, that's where this suggestion came from, was to use a portion, you know, without a whole lot of science or data, picked $200,000 of items in our, in our operating budget that we could offset with ARPA funding, recognizing that, I think, a substantial part of that still needs to go to the downtown list of projects, which we have not yet defined, but we know are going to cost money, and we're going to get lots of excitement about those, and then look at the piggy bank and have nothing there. It's going to be pretty deflating. So I'd like to, I'd like to again suggest that we have a split between the downtown projects, offsetting, I would say, a minimum of $200,000 in our operating budget of ARPA, maybe even 250. And then an increment going to FCS, who is dealing with all kinds of issues with new miners and the pandemic, and people not being able to pay for their medicine, because they're paying $80 at the gas station to fill up their car.
Just to clarify, you're saying 250 of ARPA for budget issues, the remainder for downtown and FCS?
Whatever the ratio is for, for the remainder.
I heard maybe 250, if we can be really persuasive.
Why don't we look at it, what, what number do we want? Like you said, Darrell, what, what number of an increase do we want, right?
Well, I, I, yeah.
And then, and then figure out how we can.
Might have to go the other way, but.
No, no amount of, again, let me, let me not use absolutes. Very little, our, our 10%, believe it or not, has very little impact on the overall 4%. If that was 5%, if our 10% levy increase was 5%, your total tax increase would be about 3%. And if it was zero, you'd be 2%, because you'd be looking at what the RSU is putting forward, and nothing from the town.
Right. The town is such a small part of the overall tax levy that even gigantic reductions in our budget don't really, don't really save on the levy that much.
I think, I think think of zero, if we flat budgeted, we'd see a 2% tax increase. If we went up 10%, like we're seeing in a bad-case scenario is what's been thrown in front of you.
So just to.
We'd go up four.
Kind of numerically.
Two and four is kind of the range.
Just to kind of numerically give you an idea, every $50,000 saves you 2 cents.
Yeah, that's great.
The mill rate.
Multiply it times 500 for a $500,000 house.
Ultimately, I, I think those are.
You're saving 10 cents using ARPA funds if you do 250,000.
Right. Ultimately, I think those are good guidelines, but I still think we also have an obligation to steward that that portion of, of the tax levy that is the town operating budget, and just because we can swing 300,000 here or 500,000 there, doesn't necessarily mean, because it's such a small impact on the overall tax levy, that that's really wise decisioning for us. So that's part of the reason why I'd rather not set a hard percentage number and work towards it. I'd rather set the values of what we want to include and, and navigate around. It might be 6.2, it might be 7.3.
Okay, well, the way I look at it is, we set a number, and you just attempt to get to it.
Try to get to it.
Instead of saying.
Yeah, okay.
Instead of saying, we're just doing 5%.
Right, so.
Because that's kind of unrealistic.
Right, I would agree.
It's like, well, if we can try to get here, that would be better than.
If we get to somewhere in the 6% to 7%, I would be thrilled on the, on the town.
And the other thing we have going on here is.
I'm sorry, on the 6% to 7% on the town expense?
As opposed to the 10% that we have in front of us.
Can I? I don't want to cut you off, go ahead, go ahead.
The other thing is, we don't know what's coming up in the next year and a half, two years. I mean, right now, it's, it's a mess, and I don't see it getting better. So adding people and adding, can be a problem, because it's only going to get worse.
I mean, I guess I would counter, adding the wrong people will make it worse. Adding the right people will make it better. So, and I'm not saying that we just hire a bunch of people, but I'm saying, if we make the right hires, there's a payback, there's a return on that. And we need to be really mindful to be, you know, not, not.
Yeah, I'm not saying, no, don't hire any, I'm just saying that, and you, you said Yeah, I'm not saying, no, don't hire any, I'm just saying that, and you said it right, it's hire the right people.
No, it's not, it's not. Jessica?
I just, I just really wanted, if this helps kind of like ease some of your concerns earlier, I guess I say earlier this week, it's only Tuesday. So yesterday, I received an email from the Treasury, kind of giving like a attaboy about the ARPA funds and, and kind of what to do with them and, and what the intention is. And it expressly stated that, you know, these are funds that are designed, in part, designed to assist with retaining and hiring staff. And so though they recognize that that's only, you know, a one-year savings or impact, it, it's designed, part of the intention was for that designation so that you can kind of jumpstart forward movement and getting people employed and, and, you know, working towards helping your community and things like that. So just letting you know, and I can share that email if council wishes.
Let's, let's not complicate the issue with that because that's the most insane thing that I've ever heard. Like we need, in the tightest labor market, any of us, I'm, I'm sure that's what the email said, but in the tightest labor market we on staff have ever dealt with before, the last thing we need is more hiring going on in places other than here. It's going to make, I mean, it's.
No, for, for town, for communities of towns.
I know, I know, I know, I know, I know, I'm just.
Can I ask you?
It was a political statement, not meant to be a criticism of you.
I got a question on the general fund balance. So my understanding is every year we leave a chunk of money in there, and there's a cap or a limit to how much is the right amount, and you know all the details and you always tell us how it works. It looks like we underspent our budget by almost a million dollars last year, so if we don't do anything.
Fantastic.
We would be contributing another, call it a million dollars into the general fund. And I think, if I'm reading it right, you're saying, proposing that we use $75,000 of that to offset increased spending.
An additional $75,000.
An additional 75. So that's increasing it from 600,000 that we currently use to 675,000.
So every year, we've been pulling 600,000 of the general fund to pay for the budget.
We budget for that, but we haven't had to physically use those funds because of, so a couple of things have been happening over, longer than my term here, right? The town of Freeport has historically been very conservative in their revenue projections. And we have also been very conservative with our use of budgeted expenditures, right? Because historically, the directives have always been for department heads that if you can find ways to save money and be frugal and be smart with your budgets, that money will then in turn go into your capital reserves and be used to fund those capital investments and not have the, the major impact to the bill rate for the residents, right? And so that has historically been the practice. Now, in these type of economic conditions, right, those margins have been like.
Compressed.
Crimping, right? So you have lost major sources of revenue over the last four years. You have lost, the, the expense budgets have been needing to be increased because prices of everything is skyrocketing, including wages and benefits, and everything from top to bottom has just been increasing. So everything is being even more compressed by that. So.
And, and be fair, the town manager is a big, thick-headed idiot who doesn't listen to any of your guidance on revenue, revenue levels, and constantly pushes you to adjust the revenue budget where you don't want it, right? So we can make the, so we can make the budget look good.
Yeah.
We do this every year. She's extremely conservative and does a fantastic job, and I push the envelope and we somehow end up in the middle.
And we, right, and we somehow end up with a budget we're ruining.
She's way beyond her comfort level.
Not to lose sight that the practice has resulted in the fact that, other than the 675 we did to match the DOT thing, we haven't borrowed money in decades.
In decade, I was one year away from being debt-free. One year away, I was so close.
That's remarkable for a town of 8, 9,000 people in this part of Maine.
So can you just clarify that million-dollar excess general fund and how we traditionally spent it versus, or maybe, maybe you did. So we underspent about a million, we usually take some kind of.
Yeah, so the projection right now is that there will be about a million dollars that will revert to either fund balance or capital reserves. Historically, we, more goes to capital than remains in fund balance. But, you know, any variation thereof can, can occur. And the reason that's happening this year is because primarily, when we generated last year's budget, we anticipated some level of increase to revenue sharing, but we didn't anticipate that they would have a full 5% funding of revenue sharing. And, you know, the sales industry within the state has also been a little higher than projected, I would say, because the levels that we're taking in for revenue sharing are, are higher than initially budgeted. So that's a huge one. And then I actually think I'm going to be a little shorter in excise tax revenue than I was projecting, but that may come through at the, at the 11th hour. So there, there's small little adjustments with that. I was trying to think of the other one, I think it's, the homestead ended up coming in a little bit higher, so more people have been applying for the homestead exemption where we get refunded from the state. So that's primarily what's driving that million dollars.
So not to belabor it, but of the million, 675 is going to go towards reducing next year's budget. The other 225 would go towards capital.
In theory, that would be the proposal, yes.
Is that 225, 325, thank you, an adequate-ish level of funding for what we want to put into capital reserves?
No.
We, we should be putting in more.
Yes.
To, to the tune of twice that?
I always, my first proposal to Peter is always to put the full amount in, just because your, the, the 1 million, just because in and of itself, your, your roads are, are more than that, and you have a fire truck on the horizon.
That, that million is based on that because that's what we have as excess.
Yeah.
What, what would the reserves call for if you stuck to your midpoint capital reserve plan?
Not a million, but not 200, somewhere in, somewhere in the.
Between 200 and 100.
Somewhere in the high range.
Yeah, we're slightly, we're slightly, I'll use the phrasing, we're slightly overfunded on our fund balance right now. The best practice, well, I say that, your policy is one and a half months, I believe, or two, two months.
Dan was asking.
For capital reserves.
No, Dan was asking the corollary to that. Sorry, not, I don't, I don't, you can hear me probably not well. Not the operating budget, the general funds, how much, how much we are over, but how much we're under on the, the capital.
Oh, how much are we underfunded?
Yeah, if you're using the mid-benchmark kind of range, how much should we be putting in a year? And I said.
Thank you.
Five to 700,000 range, not, not a million, not 200,000.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Does that sound right, is that in the range?
That sounds about right, it sounds about right, I can.
Putting 325 is a little less, but not, not dangerously less.
Right, but if we rated it more, it would come out of capital contribution.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, that was my question, thank you.
You don't make pet peeve on capital budget and.
You think we have too much in the capital budget?
No.
Okay.
I agree 100% with Jessica. I, I come back and I know if Ed was here in 83, when we were almost hung, I was here as, as a chief by the townspeople because we were in a situation, we were bonding everything. We bonded our dump trucks, we bonded our fire truck, we were bonding cruisers. It really got out of control. So I'm hoping that we get back to, you know, what the policies used to be is, you know, we fully funded the two-year of the capital, the three years that was left out of the five-year plan was invested, and I think we need to get more aggressive on our investments, and that's a discussion for another meeting.
Yeah.
What I, what I would like to do relative to the capital budget today, I'd like to suggest that Peter go to the department heads, let them take outside the box and see if there's some revenues out there that may come back. You know, I don't know whether non-emergency transport is a viable thing or not, but if we don't look at it, we won't know. We see a shortage, a significant shortage that comes through on parking tickets, and that was primarily due to people not coming to town in the pandemic, but hopefully we're coming out of this. So maybe we do a little more enforcement there. I, I'm not sure, but I, I, I think we've got some talented staff in the town and talented department heads, throw it out to them. Maybe there's a, maybe there's something they come up with that's off the wall that we haven't considered here that may help us, it's not going to get us out of the woods completely, but it may help offset some of the costs we've got coming forward.
Could probably increase the late fee on short-term rentals by about a thousand.
Well.
On that note.
Which is honestly, honestly low for the other communities that do that, but just, that's a little side note.
Is there any?
Chip's going to find me in the parking lot after that one, I think.
Is there any consideration in any of this for the benefits of a grants rider? I mean, in other words, do we have a grant rider? And is anybody projecting how much grant money he, she might attract? And is, is that being calculated in this pot?
I'm not sure I follow your question.
Is grant revenue being considered in any way in setting any of these numbers?
Revenue?
No, you mean incoming grant awards?
From a grant.
Yeah, no.
Not ARPA, but we might have lots of other places. The, the DOT downtown, you know, plan has some money in it.
Right, there's, there's no.
It'd be nice if we had a sense of how much low-hanging grant fruit there might be for a town that's in the revisioning process we're in.
To me, those look like costs more than savings because there's always going to be a match, right?
So it becomes a revenue driving.
They're projects we haven't funded yet.
Oh, I see.
If we get a grant, we will do the project, but we'd have.
I think, I think you get extreme discount on, you get a 90% discount on what you're going to do, but the budget still goes up by the 10% match. And long-term, it saves us, don't take that the wrong way, Ed, I'm not saying that it's a bad idea to get grants, I'm just saying, from a taxation standpoint, we'll see a little bit, when you get a grant and you have to match it by 10% or 25%, you see a little bit of increase on the front end, but the long-term benefit is that you don't have to fund $4 million worth of downtown projects because you've got this big comprehensive grant that you've had to match $300,000 towards it or something like that.
I mean, unless it's for something that's in our five-year capital plan.
Correct.
Right, or even our operating budget, if we find a grant to pay for a social worker for the police department, that cuts $100,000 out of our operating budget for a year.
It differs.
Or.
But for capital.
Well, cuts it for a year.
100%, yeah, yeah, it goes, it goes for a year or two years or three years, I've got to deal with it. But Matt's point is spot-on, capital purchases are one-time purchases by their definition.
Right, right, right.
Or at least in the 20-year cycle of things, they're one-time purchases, so.
Which I, part of your grant match that's in here is for the mallet drive, right? If I'm remembering, which is in the capital plan at a reduced rate, at a reduced rate because of this anticipated.
I think both of those, one's a $10,000 grant match, the other one's a $50,000 grant match.
Correct.
Leveraging 300-something thousand dollars worth of the front-end money for doing the mallet design and layout and reworking, so.
Correct.
It wouldn't be the actual construction cost, that's contemplated in a future year, but it's a substantial chunk of money that we got to spend otherwise.
Okay.
Well, I've got, I've got marching orders to find $250,000 worth of, up to, if I have a really good sales pitch, $250,000 worth of one-time costs that we can apply, that we can talk to you about ARPA for, that takes us to about half of our increase level, our levy increase. You're going to kill me, aren't you? I know you are.
Nope.
Because you, you don't think they'll be one-time.
That would take the 10 to 5?
Roughly, four, between four and five and a half.
Five seems pretty reasonable and 9% inflation.
But we need to find, these, these will be one-time costs. I'm, I'm already, I'm on board with the two of the three, the, what were the suggestions?
Grant.
Grant match, ordinance work and saving.
Yep, because those are one-time costs. The grant match would be more of a deferral, but we don't know if we're going to go after $300,000 grants every year for roadwork. We might not, it might be 20,000 next year instead of 60, so. And I, we can, well, I'll do my best to work politely with our finance director to find some 100,000 of other locations.
I mean, the other, the other, the other thought, right, is rather than it being a removal of these expenses, it can be, I, I mean, you still have to vote and designate the ARPA funds for, for purposes, right? But it can be an influx of the ARPA funds into revenue, like, you know, a $300,000 ARPA funding of general governmental services.
Yeah.
Versus physically removing the grant match from the general fund and having it just be like a special revenue.
I, I agree completely, yeah. Moving, moving the, the actual ledger lines, that's a, that.
And that's why I'm just saying, because I'm not sure if we need to go all the way down the road of finding every single item that come out.
Oh, you're just saying, put 250 into revenue.
In principle, though, we wouldn't want to be, we wouldn't want to be funding something in the operating budget with ARPA money that's going to show up next year, and then we're going to be saying, Jessica, where'd this 9% increase come from?
I want to identify $250,000 worth of one-time costs, so we're confident that we could at least next year say, hey, we, at least $250,000.
And I guess, you know, if you can find 300, tell us about 300.
I'll go crazy.
I, I do, you know, that's an excellent point because from where I sit, I would like to see a chunk of this money go to FCS for general assistance, for heating assistance. I mean, those costs are going to be astronomical, and it's already hitting the people who have suffered the most through the pandemic, and we need to be mindful of that. And I'm not saying these other things aren't worth it, but in my mind and my vote, a good chunk of that should be going to FCS.
Ed?
Me or Dara?
Ed.
So there is an ARPA committee which is partially functioning that has had a discussion about this, and it's a growing movement, I consent. But I have questions at least about FCS support from these funds to, to the extent that you do, because I see the recipients getting funding from a whole lot of other sources that are governmental. And I don't, and I'm not saying I'm right or wrong about that, but before I jump up, I'm not against FCS, but before I jump fully on your, on your train, I'd like to know a little bit more about how all those other monies are coming through the system to benefit the same recipients that your, our ARPA funds would go, because I see a whole lot of other needs in the community that have already been identified in other ways that are justifiably recipients of some of those fundings.
Yeah, and, and so I, I think that's a reasonable question to ask. I think a lot of those funding sources are going away, and that's going to be the problem. I mean, this is.
Do we get some help from FCS in quantifying those?
Yeah, absolutely. I, I talked to them this past week, they're more than willing to, to come, talk to us, to answer questions, to provide materials, absolutely.
I, you know, if I could sit down just myself with the executive director and just sort of go through that, I'd be happy to do it.
Should be happy to have you take your call.
With the committee we've set up to do that, I'd be happy to have them here at a workshop, however you want to do it.
I think, I think they might, Eric, sorry. I think they might be approaching the council in the next meeting or two anyways, some of the questions we got earlier in the meeting about general assistance impacts, that's something that we're working with them, they do our GA. So we may want to update you in the next meeting or two meetings anyways, so it may be, that may be a good time to publicly ask them about some of the support too while they're already here, so.
Dara?
I, you know, I know we have a lot of needs at FCS, but we had the discussion earlier of trying to give the elderly people, the longtime residents of this town, to be able to freeze their taxes. We can't lose sight of that, that falls directly in line, I think, also with the challenges we've got on both sides. So I hope, and I think if I remember right, that was part of this budget, but I want to make sure we continue to look at that and get something on the books to give them relief, because I'm, I'm hearing it from people out there that their income's not going up and, and the cost of everything is just really struggling.
There is an, there is actually a new state program.
Right.
To provide assistance in that, in that vein.
And you could also ask FCS to earmark some of the money if they're going to receive money from the town for elderly assistance, which I'm sure they'd be glad to do.
One of the things that we're trying to get on the agenda for next time, looking to both of you, is the reserve, capital reserve account fund balance and also policy, right? So do we have the right amount of money in there? Because we had some discussion with the council about that. And then are we investing in the right things? Because we had some discussion around that, and part of that discussion is, do we want to get out of fossil fuel investments? So if we have time in the next meeting, it would be a great time to have that discussion because that could influence the, is $325,000 the right amount to put into capital reserves this year? Should it be more, should it be less?
We have the information too, so we can.
And we have what we need to do that? Okay, so as long as the agenda isn't swamped with a midnight kind of timeline.
We have information, I don't think it's ever enough, but we can have the conversation.
Start the conversation, okay.
Does, does that information include sort of reasonable expectations for rate of return on investment accounts that aren't in the kind of conservative investments that we use for various reasons that I've heard, which I've forgotten, but are still sort of stunning to someone who's got a portfolio in the private sector?
Yeah, I mean, that, that.
Do you have information about that, or is that stuff we need to develop?
I think we have information about the split in our reserves, the money that is, you know, there's a, there's a percentage that's dedicated that makes market rate on equities, you know, similar, you know, index, relatively index-driven that any of us could see with little to no investing skill. And then there's a chunk of that that's cash or stable investment that gets next to nothing or negative when corrected.
I mean, again, why that's there, that, that other, it's a bigger proportion. Again, why that's there, that, that other, it's a bigger proportion.
Because the town council told us it had to be that way.
Yeah.
Um, so there is nothing, that is your political, previous council, not this council.
Probably my daughter. So it's, it's like.
Probably you when you originally hugged the council.
But we did it because we wanted to have a, a, a ready, uh, access to liquid.
Exactly. Yeah, so, so it's a political, it's a political judgment and there's no wrong answer until you, until it actually happens and we do the wrong thing.
Could you compare what would have, return would have been had, had some.
You mean different?
Different percentages of it in liquid versus the kind of fund that you've got, some of our stuff in.
Depends on what start date you pick, right? If you pick a full run and you get, look at all the money we missed, but then if you look at the last ten years, well, jeez, we avoided the whole two thousand and nine crisis.
Then do it, do it ten years, five years, one year. Like I get from my investment guy every six months or something.
I don't have the capacity to do that before the next meeting, nor do I have the capacity to do that myself for any period of time. And I can almost guarantee our investment advisor, well, I can ask them. I'm not sure they can turn that around in a two-week timeframe.
Maybe, Ed, would you be kind of, to kind of project it going forward, saying we have seven million dollars and we invested fifty percent in market rate stuff and twenty percent in cash stuff?
I think we could do that.
These are returns we could sort of expect based on averages.
I think we could do a hypothetical of saying exactly, using exactly what you said.
Yeah, going forward.
If we know what we got, twenty-five percent in equities and we know that the cash, the seventy-five percent stable did nothing or was flat.
You lost money for an equity.
You can figure out if you doubled, I mean, you could figure out how much we would have lost if we had fifty percent in equities instead of twenty-five. We can do that.
You think we would have lost if we'd been in equity?
This, this year, we would have lost thirty percent, twenty percent, yeah.
But, I mean, it is a dangerous game to look at past performance to predict future performance. So we do need to be mindful of that. I think the debate is around what do we need that's readily accessible and that's safe versus, and especially in this rate environment, I mean, there are changes. I mean, we're talking about decisions that were made ten years ago, five years, whatever they were. It's a different environment. We just need to look at it.
The only reason that I'm jumping at saying I'd love to do that is because I think it will show that we would have been hosed last year. You know, in the past twelve, twelve months, we would have lost more than, we would have lost, if we were double exposed in equities, we would have lost twice what we did lose.
You would have lost the security of public funds.
Yeah.
What you would have lost.
So that's the discussion that I think we should have hopefully at the next meeting.
And I'll make my pitch as someone who did that in two thousand eight and post-two thousand eight and worked with, when you've governed this policy, like what happened to our three million dollars? Why is it a million?
We have seven million dollars that we're talking about.
Roughly, I think.
Seven million.
Yeah.
And, and of that, what's, you call stable accounts, capital?
It's all over the, it's by category. So different parts of it are invested different ways.
We'll, we'll have all that information though.
I'd like to do a little research.
Yeah.
Because I know where his research is going to go. I want to see what somebody else I might talk to.
Yeah, we, I think we, I probably have an email that you sent to us in the past that I can dig up and send to you, Ed, with the policy in it, which had the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It'll be six months old, but it's.
Yeah.
Accurate.
Yeah. Um, so, uh, you know, uh, again, my six cents here, I'm reading the room, sensing it's time to go home. My suggestion to you guys is, you know, there's a hundred and thirty odd pages of budget stuff in here. We covered a little bit like the major differences today. If you go through it, I kind of highlighted maybe three or four things that I'm going to follow up with Jessica on that we probably don't need to do at the council level, but if you find things like that, reach out to Jessica or Peter before the next meeting so you can get all your detailed questions answered.
Why did pencils go up by ten thousand dollars?
That's one of my questions, yes.
I'm buying gold pencils and, I mean, they're good.
Again.
And then we can pick up where we left off on June seventh, except that we're all going to be here next Tuesday because we have a workshop with FEDC to talk in part about prioritizing downtown projects and just FEDC's priorities, priorities for the year. Um, and then I think we're off the following week, so you get a Tuesday off.
To somebody's point earlier, would, would somebody ask FEDC or could we talk to FEDC about what it intends to do in terms of identifying and acquiring grants for the town?
We, yeah, so I mentioned earlier before you got here that Brett, um, was tasked with maintaining a list of any grant potential. So if somebody's applying for a grant, if somebody has a grant source identified, I've asked that they just copy Brett on an email and he's got a master list that he's starting to build to say, here's eighty-three grant opportunities we pursued and here are the stats of how many we get and who we went after. So we have a single point of contact for that.
But he's, but he's not being tasked with going after grants other than, other than he went after that sewer grant.
He went after sewer grant. He did another T-Mobile grant for fifty thousand dollars. So he's doing some, but I think the consensus is, he's not going to be, he doesn't have the time to do all of the grants. Yeah.
Make, make a motion.
I second it.
We agree on some.
All in favor of a journey? All right. Thank you, Jake. Thanks for sticking with us. I know you're not feeling well. We are adjourned.
I know. What was one?
Jake's here. Missed you, man.